Is it working? Is the clock running?
We're about to send out the intercenter. We're about to send out the intercenter.
Scroll down on the right here.
Middle screen.
Not yet.
There we go.
Right, okay, all right, good evening everyone, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen to order for Thursday the fifteenth of February twenty eighteen.
And we will call to, uh, call to order the Board of Finance meeting as well.
And please join us in the pledge. Pledge and leave in this.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will continue with department presentations and I think, who do we have first up?
The assessor.
The assessor, and welcome our new assessor.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome Elizabeth Hurt, I am the new assessor of the town, so this is my first presentation, so hopefully I won't totally make a mess of it, we'll try.
That's okay, all we want from me was millions and millions and millions.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Which is my favorite subject, houses revenue.
We've done the revaluation, things have increased a little, we don't have numbers yet because we're waiting for the Board of Assessment Appeals, but we did do our revaluation for October of two thousand seventeen. So, that being said, um, overall, I think you can see our budget went down this year, and I have to get that out, and that's really primarily due to staffing. Um, we did have, um, our clerk left last August, Emery retired in October, so then, um, of course I was nominated, I, you know, um, I went for the position of assessor and I was accepted, um, and that was in November. And then we now have a new clerk and a new assistant assessor, so that's, thank goodness, we're back up to rolling again. Um, due to that, because the appays have gone down, our longevity has gone down because we now have only two of us that will get the longevity instead of, we had three before. The increases that I have are really due because we have new staff, I have to have extra education money. Um, it's really important that they become certified, um, it's a CCMA which is a Connecticut Certified Municipal Assessor. Uh, there are five courses that they need to take to become a CC, to sit, they have to pass for those five courses, they have to then sit and take an exam for the CCMA one. If they continue to take a CCMA two, which that qualifies them for commercial, the income approach, it qualifies those areas. So, that is why you'll see the increase in my, um, um, education. The other would be my office expenses, and then I want the increase in that because I'm going to go and have, we have a, uh, our admins program, they can send out the postcards. And that will help us with personal property and the income and expense, um, postcards, that way I can get my staff out to do some field work. Because since they did, we left, we had the shortness of staff last fall, they did not get to do the field work that we would have done with personal property. So, if we can do the postcards, I don't have to waste their time mailing and, and post, you know, stuffing envelopes. That is pretty much my budget.
So, question?
Any questions?
So, uh, the office expenses, so having, so you're gonna, you're gonna essentially farm out the mailing of the postcards?
Correct.
Uh, how many, how much time did that take the staff to do, so did you do it before?
We did it before, so we have to.
And that was all done by hand?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, we have to mail them, we have to bring them to the post office, we have to, you know, you have to now go to Danbury to get them posted, I mean, to get them, um, dropped off. That way they can take that time and actually canvass, we'll go, we go through all the personal property, so we go through Berkshire, we go through Francis J. Clark, all of Greenwood Avenue, looking at what businesses, are they here, are they gone? It's a lot of time consuming work.
Um, how many personal property accounts are there?
Twelve hundred and eighty-nine. Yes. We have seventy-two hundred and sixty-six parcels of real estate, and we have, this year, this past year, we had twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty motor vehicles. Those, most of those, of course, the motor vehicles, most of them have to be valued, personal property, we have to go through all those personal property declarations. They take up most of the time because of the fall.
Yeah, I wanna point out for the new folks that personal property is really, uh, it's a misnomer because it refers to business machinery. You know, that's classified personal property, but it's, you know, it could be a five million dollar manufacturing machine.
Correct.
So, those all have to be personally reviewed and inspected to, to properly value them, correct?
We did lose one company, we lost Magellan last year.
Yeah.
That was a big one, um, I think they had over two million in, in, um, personal property, so hopefully somebody will buy that property and that will help pick up that, what we will lose on that company.
Izzy, why, why did we lose that and where did they go?
They went south, I can't, I don't remember exactly now to tell you the truth, um, it's been on the market for the last, I think they left last March.
Do you know offhand just the address or about?
It's one sixty-five Grassy Plain Street. Don't hold me, might not be wrong, the number, but about there.
About, got it. And, and Izzy, I just wanted to make sure I was following, you were, is it in the station area and supplies that you will put the cost for this shipping out?
For the postage, yes.
So, that's why it went up that seventy-five dollars?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And your contract services went up two thousand?
Correct, we have a new software program, and that is also updated four times a year, where the other one was two times a year.
So, it seems that the, um, the reductions have to do because of all the moving around of, of staff.
Correct.
And, uh, yeah, those three things, and also longevity, which makes sense too.
Good thing for, yeah, and longevity, correct.
Izzy?
Yes.
Does the, uh, you talked about education, does that apply just to the assessor's assistant or also the technician or?
The assistant, now we have, and when she got the job, she has to attain her CCMA one.
Right, I understand that.
Um, the clerk, I would like her to have it, the better knowledgeable is she is, the less chances of us get sued for making an error.
Is part, is part of this budget? Okay, thank you.
We have to answer a lot of questions, we answer for attorneys, um, real estate, um, agents, um, who else I say, CPA, so they really should be taking these courses and be qualified to answer for these.
What makes the, the office be more efficient?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
What is the process for flushing out out-of-state vehicles? It's a very popular subject on page.
It is, and I can't tell you the letters, I have a stack, probably a stick of letters that we send, um, I just got somebody who sent me a list of out-of-state registrations. What we do is I go out to them, I, I take pictures, because of course it's better to have that actual picture, because when they tell me they weren't there, I have it. Um, we send them a letter telling them that they do have certain amount of time that they're required by the state to get registered. Sometimes it's family, it could be, you know, I had one lady, her son came in for the summer, so of course he was there, he's from New Hampshire, legitimately he's registered in New Hampshire, came in in the summer. So, we do have to weed those out.
Is it on a regular basis?
Um, that we do that?
Or, or at, like, as the letters come in or a regular basis?
Um, we also do more out-of-field work with personal property, that is another time that we, um, do canvas certain areas that we know, um, where there might be more rentals, people are coming, people are going. Those are the ones that we will, because they may not know, they have their registration, it's New York, they may say, oh, I'll wait until it expires, but we'll send them the letter saying you have to get registered in Connecticut.
Any other questions from the Board of Finance members?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Next year will be so much easier.
Hello, Anne, fiscal tax collector. I've been here and done this a few times, it's just as nervous as the first time, just saying. Um, for those who don't know my office, I have, um, four, four full-time staff and one part-time benefit coordinator who I share with the assessor's office, as well as he does a few programs that, um, like he does the energy assistance and stuff like that, um, those programs as well. Two of my staff members are paid by the utility department because we also collect the water sewer and sewer assessments. My office collects eleven months of the year, we are collecting something, February happens to be the only month we're not billing something. We have, um, four annual tax bills, four, uh, quarterly tax bills, four quarterly water bills and sewer bills, five sewer assessments, spring bar and hydrants, that's it. It is enough. My budget is exactly the same as last year, other than the salaries, um, I did not increase my budget, uh, even though there was a slight increase, and I mean a very slight increase in postage. Because we do bulk mailing and, uh, because the software company that I used held their prices the same. I've instituted paperless billing for people that will sign up, uh, we do not have a tremendous amount of people signed up for the paperless billing. It's, it's one of those things that I think will grow as time goes on and people get familiar with using it. I'm working with a new supplier to reduce the envelope cost, uh, I've been actually doing that over a, a year and a half approximately. Started slow because we weren't sure of the quality of the envelopes, they would be able to go through our machines, but they do, so, um, that's why I was able to hold my budget the same. That's it.
Anne, just a quick, quick question, your collection rate is still running ninety-nine percent?
It is, and I, last, this past June, it was ninety-nine point one five.
Thank you.
Anne, what is benefit coordinator?
Um, John Sarver handles the, um, elderly applications for elderly benefits, this past year we had three hundred and forty-one. He handles them for myself and for the assessor's office, he takes the applications, he screens the applicants, they all have to be met with a, by appointment. He also, um, screens the fire abatement applications that are made, um, the rent or rebate applications that are made through the assessor's office, and he does the energy assistance. Uh, he's been indispensable, he is a one-stop shop for anybody that has a need, he will direct them if they need to go to social services, he'll direct them to where they go. They can go there and get all their forms that they qualify for done in one shot, oh, he takes the veterans' applications as well, yeah.
Yeah, I know exactly who he is, is associated and connected with that thing.
Okay.
And the ninety-nine point one five percentage collection rate, for what period is that?
That was from July through June thirtieth of this past year, this last fiscal year.
Fiscal year seventeen?
Seventeen eighteen.
Sixteen seventeen.
Sixteen seventeen.
Sixteen seventeen, I'm sorry, sixteen seventeen, yes.
Got it, so the year ended June thirtieth of seventeen?
This, yes.
What was the collection rate, if you were to go back, what were the collection rates kind of going into the financial recession?
Uh, I, I have always, since I've been tax collector, we have always hit ninety-nine percent, um, sometimes ninety-nine point one, sometimes ninety-nine two or three. We've always hit ninety-nine, uh, prior, and many years ago, uh, we probably had a little bit of lower collection rate.
How far back ago?
Oh, let's see.
Decade?
Yeah, more than that, two, maybe, maybe two decades, it's been a while, we're, we're, we try to be very efficient. Our staff has not changed with, in, in, since I've been here, other the addition of the hours that John Sarver has. And over the years, we've put in cost-cutting measures, more electronics, more computers, more things like that, that have allowed us to continue on a good path. My staff works very hard, I have a staff, very good staff. Any other questions?
So, there's nothing in the economy that would change that in the foreseeable future, like ninety-nine percent?
Well, there's always something in the economy, in two thousand seven, when the, when we had the, uh, drop in the housing market, it was extremely, extremely difficult. It was very difficult to work in that office, people are, I mean, it's not an easy job, people are strapped, I mean, my staff have, always has to be conscious of the fact that people feel we're reaching into their pocket and taking their, their money. And essentially we are, um, but we have a responsibility and a job to do for the town of Bethel, and they do it very well, with as much kindness as possible.
But even in the depth of those recession periods, it sounds like you had ninety-nine?
We might have slipped to ninety-eight maybe, but very close to ninety-nine, I would say.
Anne, wasn't, wasn't there a year there, and it might have been seven or maybe six, when, um, we had to stop, um, I was the treasurer back then?
Absolutely, there was, it, it was in two thousand seven, uh, two thousand eight, right around there. We really slipped, and in January the collection rate was very, very, uh, much lower, and so we scaled everything back, the Board of Ed stopped buying, we stopped buying, everybody stopped, uh, spending money until, um, but we did pick it up in the end. That was a tough year, that's the year I'm talking about. Um, I would also like to emphasize too that education, um, is very important, I would hope that my budget can remain the same, for the same reasons. We have so many legislative changes that happen all the time from the state, uh, I heard two new ones yesterday that are just, um, really, you know, some of them are just ideas of getting money and how they're gonna do it, and many times it involves the tax office, and you just, you, you never know how it's gonna hit, you know? But, and all these changes come at a risk, you know, if our employees are not trained and don't know the law, then it puts us all at risk for lawsuits.
Because you deal mostly, like other departments, with the state statutes, and you gotta be.
We have to file the state statutes, also federal because of bankruptcy, so, you know, there's always, that's an extra, extra thing to throw in there. The bankruptcy laws are very, very difficult to understand, and so we've always got some sort of training on those.
You, you said you had two full-time from the PUC, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the two clerks are paid out of the PUC, Paul and myself are paid out of this budget, and John Sarver.
Have you had, um, uh, any panicked calls to the office about assault taxes not being able to be deducted from veteran complex?
Well, December was rough, um, we had a lot of prepayments, um. I don't think we'll see the end result of that until after the April installment, I actually pulled a report today that I let Bob know that currently, I have sixty-nine thousand dollars in prepayments right now, um, overpayments. That were the result of prepayments, because the bank paid and people paid. I was at a meeting yesterday in Hartford and, um, the tax collector from us.
Woodbridge?
Woodbridge, Woodbridge, had two hundred thousand dollars, and she's a small town, West Hartford has over a million, they have to give all that money back.
Why do they have to go back?
Because it's overpaid, because people came in and paid taxes themselves and then their escrow companies paid. And they're seeing higher numbers because they collect semi-annually, so they're seeing their overpayments, I see some of them, but not, I don't think we have them all in yet. And.
So, there's gonna come a point this year, in the spring, that you're gonna have to come to the Board of Finance and, and, uh, let them know that there's gonna be a refund to either the mortgage companies or, uh, the taxpayers?
Well, the process is not to the Board of Finance, the process is to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna submit some for their next board, their next meeting, as we normally do, that's the process, is it goes to the Board of Selectmen, and they approve the refunds. You know, but it's careful for, it's important for us to know that we have it there for the end of the year for the auditors, you know, because by the time they go to audit, we're not, you know, I just gotta make sure I remember why we have all those overpayments.
Anne, and you were saying in total it's about sixty-nine thousand?
Right now it's sixty-nine thousand.
So, so that I'm clear on this, you were saying that these people who are prepaying are not alert, alerting their escrow companies to not duplicate that?
They did, but they're, you know, it's a process, you, you know. It's too, yeah, it's too late sometimes to stop the train, that's exactly right, many of them are paid by, um, banks that use large taxing service, and we just get bundles wired into the, our accounts, so.
Bundles like that.
Bundles.
I'm, I'm a good example, I, I prepaid, and I called, so it was at the very end of December, and I called my bank, they said, they use a, an aggregator to put everything together, and it was already on its way in. So, I'll, I'll be one of the ones that gets a refund, refund, but I did, I stopped the April.
Oh, yeah, yeah, some do, some don't, so, you know, that number may grow, uh, as April comes, if the bank is not aware of it, or if people haven't notified their bank. Is that it?
Further questions, I guess?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Building, building inspection. You're the winner.
So, my name is Christopher Baldwin, I'm the building official for the town, and in our department, we have the Ministry of Assistant Jolene Drucker and an assistant building official, Joe Fallow. And, looking through the, um, the narrative, um, Bethel's doing very well when it comes to construction. One of the things I wanted to point out is the annual years two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, uh, we saw an uptick in the total fees collected, as, as permits coming in, projects coming in. And also the total estimated construction values have increased substantially, um, showing an increase in permit activity. It also shows an increase in construction value, showing that there are larger projects, commercial projects coming in for building permits, and what we do as we go, we inspect the projects, make sure they're in compliance with the state building code. And then in addition to that, our duties are to follow up on any violations, with respecting the, the building code, illegal apartments, anything that has to do with the life safety of individuals within the community.
Just looking at the first six months in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, six months in, it looks to be a little bit less than half of what it was in the prior year, is that just trending, or does it kinda get back?
It, it's hard to, it depends, sometimes we have a strong fall, sometimes we have a strong spring. That's why I did the full annual years of two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen this spring, if the economy still does well, things will just keep, keep moving along. One of the things I could probably point out that might help you is some projections for the coming year. Um, one of the things is we're in the midst of the, the police station, um, that really hasn't brought in any red, revenue, but it does impact the inspections for the department. But we also have a hundred and twenty apartments in six buildings that are gonna go on Stony Hill, which is a large construction project for which we will collect fees for that coming in. We also have Toll Brothers, they've increased the sales, their sales, um, and their construction, uh, we've seen an uptick in the projects both at the Summit and Bethel Crossing. We also have coming up a major project on Greenwood Avenue, about twenty thousand square foot building, uh, next to Carlusi's, that will be coming up, for which we'll be able to collect fees and, and so forth. The other thing we want to be aware of too is that we've also seen an increase in some of the illegal apartments, which is required more enforcement, and for us to be a little more diligent in that too. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is with the banks and the new regulations that they have, a lot of times before you can buy and sell your home, uh, they're finding situations where there is no permit. So, it requires a lot of time for us to back into these projects where they did work without permits, and then closing out of permits too, due to different banking regulations in the past few years. But we, we do see an increase in, in a couple of large commercial projects and residential projects coming in.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure, why?
Are we, is our turn around time pretty typical compared to all of the other towns, you know, between when an application first comes in?
To be honest, we could use some help. Um, we're, we could be turning them around a little quicker, but we just have a huge workload that's, that's coming in. I'm looking into efficiencies in the department to try and make it more efficient. One of the things I'm working on in the future is to try and digitize a lot of our files. If we have to find a file, we have to go to the file cabinet, we have to search through it, we have to go through it, if we can digitize everything, it does a lot of things. It's right there at the computer, when we're doing our plan reviews, we can go right to the computer, we can pull up the property information, now we have to go searching for the files. And also too, they can be in different locations, so there's a lot of different things that slow the process down that I'm working on trying to make more efficient, but, um, if we did have more clerical help, maybe like with answering the phones. A lot of times Jolene is there, and she's trying to process a permit, and she's getting five or six phone calls, and she keeps getting pulled away and so forth. And so, that's why in here, I'm asking for a part-time person to come in, do some clerical work, answering the phone, doing files, so we can concentrate more on those permits that are coming in, answering them in and then processing them.
But it'd be fair to say that if you had the additional help, that you would be able to generate almost more income, because it would.
It would encourage?
Process, right, would, would encourage building, and it would just be quicker for builders or somebody, you know, trying to do construction?
Yeah, I think if there's an, and, if there's any negativity put out there, it would discourage the homeowner who's, you know, doing work or a contractor. A lot of questions I get when they first come in is, here's my permit, how long is it gonna take? How, how long do I have to wait for it, or, you know, I wanna get going, or they have schedules and things like that, so, yeah, the, the, the better our services, the more encouraging it is for people to come in and pull the permits and do what they need to do.
Chris, uh, uh, on that same note, I, I know, you've been sitting here on the board here, at least the three of us have, we've heard this before about digitizing everything. With this clerk, uh, do you have the equipment to start digitizing it?
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to do at this point is, I'm working with a software company.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're already integrated with the DPW, and they're willing to work with us to design this piece of software that will work with the building department. And so, I would, I, I would like to get incoming documentation digitized first.
Okay.
And then go and scan all the information, because if we don't do it that way, then if we're still in the paper, we're, we're, we're doing double duty.
All right, and then my second question, usually to everybody here, are, are fees, have we readjusted them?
I have readjusted the fees, there, there's two ways of adjusting the fees, in the building code, I'm supposed to take the application in, and my fee is based on the construction value. Say, for instance, uh, a new home, and the square footage cost of that new home. I looked at what we were charging.
Yeah.
And it wasn't really market value, it wasn't really a, a fair, so what I did was I took the national average of what these construction costs are, and implemented them into the building department to.
So, in other words, are, my, my, the reason why for the question is, it's every year I ask, we're about to round, uh, are we competitive with the surrounding towns, or maybe from the municipality you came from?
Well, we are, we are in that aspect, but the one area where we're probably less than most of the towns is the part of the fees where it's the cost per, that, that first thousand, and every thousand thereafter. So, for instance, we, our first thousand, if someone comes in and the project's a thousand dollars, we charge twenty-five dollars and then. So, for instance, we, our first thousand, if someone comes in and the project's a thousand dollars, we charge twenty-five dollars and then twenty-six cents goes to the state. And then every thousand in addition to that is eight dollars and twenty-six cents. The surrounding towns, I would say, are generally more like thirty to thirty-five dollars per thousand for the first thousand. And generally ten to twelve dollars per thousand thereafter. That, so that's how we compare to answer your question.
But this is something that we can address, uh, in a.
Absolutely.
Good.
Yep.
But, but you've raised your fees already, right?
They're correct, in what I talked about first with the, the market value.
Yeah.
Based on what I see we were doing historically for square footage costs. I brought.
So, there's an automatically increased revenue versus last year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we're reviewing the rest of the fees.
Yeah, we are.
Uh, I had gone, just so you know, I had gone to Chris last year about this time and, and asked him to review the fees and he said, well, the cost per square foot for, uh, for construction hasn't been updated in many years. So, why don't we do that first rather than, like, do a double whammy and let's, see how that shakes out. So, we will continue to, to examine that.
But looking at your, you say your projections for new, new, uh, assess, new assessed values, is it looking probably the very same as this year or the previous fiscal year?
Well, I get quarterly reports from the International Code Council, which is the organization that writes the codes, and quarterly, they give us national construction average costs. And so, I will adjust, uh, based on those national averages. So, if they go up a little bit, I'll adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Just one other question on the, uh, part-time clerk. Um, I'd love to give you everything, but let's just say, um, that may not work or a portion thereof is, do you know, and maybe I'm asking you, putting you on the line for the other departments. But do you think that there would be a way if we were to fund a part-time clerk, um, it could be maybe a shared thing, would say the health department, uh, if they needed it, public works, can somebody be utilized that way?
That, that's a, that's a possibility, just as long as we could get the hours we needed, you know, um. And the other thing too is the, the part-time position, its intent is, is that because in the summertime, that's when we're the busiest. And so, maybe going down the same thought process you are, maybe we could have someone in the summer for longer hours and then when the winter, we slow down, maybe another department could use that person. I, I'm open to that.
Okay, that's just.
Yeah.
You think you tell.
Yeah, I just, um, give me some help, please.
There you go.
I had, um, a question, somewhat along those lines, but I'm thinking that is there not someone who's already in, rather than taking another person on, maybe there already exists somebody. Or especially if you have more volume in the summer, it could be like an hourly person, but the hours would, the work would determine the hours. So, there may, is, there may be some part-time person who exists now in the department who may be able to take on more without necessarily crossing the threshold into full-time. So, um, because I, you know, I'm always wary of headcount, you know, just to add another person. So, that's just.
If you've got anybody in your mind, please tell me afterward.
I'll have to do a review.
I guess I was thinking about this a little bit differently. The part-time help, I took it to be an hourly help, so it would not be benefits, would not be a full-time position.
Correct, yeah.
So, it'd be a twenty thousand dollar.
Part-time, yeah, yeah.
And some hourly rate to be established.
Yeah, yeah. Thinking, you know, I, not sure what, you know, I'd have to kind of evaluate that, but it was an estimate. I was basing on maybe twelve to fifteen dollars an hour, something like that, uh, for, you know, less than twenty hours a week.
So, it's almost analogous.
Twenty to fifteen or something like that.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, that contracted services, because that, obviously you're making a commitment to somebody, like, this is your part-time position. Because what you're talking about that's needed is digitization and, you know, I'm, it doesn't seem like you're wanting to develop somebody to take another role. If it's strictly digitization, that is something that, you know, is sort of a generalist.
Well, it's not only that, it, there's a true need for like answering the phones, um, you know, doing clerical work. And if, if the economy continues to do well and we, we stay flat or increase, I could very easily keep someone busy, you know, through the wintertime and increase their hours if that workload coming in does increase. But I'm trying to be a little frugal and go with someone part-time where we're not, you know, including benefits and things like that, but someone who, who might want a, a part-time job with the building department. Other questions?
Any other questions on the board?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, um, how best is, uh, IT?
No, we did that yesterday. We did that the other day.
All right.
Yeah, social services, two hundred.
Social services. And please welcome Megan Allworth Kazidian. And Lisa Plum.
Her sidekick. My support, so my heart doesn't stop.
Well, we have police here.
I know.
And I do.
My good hand. So, yes, my name is Megan Allworth Kazidian. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the social worker for the town of Bethel. And the, um, budget that I'm proposing is an increase of a hundred and forty-three dollars. I apologize, I'm so nervous. If I talk too fast, please slow me down.
You're nervous. We're your friends.
A lot of money.
Would you like a chocolate?
As far as, as far as the salary goes, um, I am requesting, um, an assistant. The salary won't be changed, um, but I am looking for an assistant for, for hu- uh, with the pay that I was, was doing for approximately four hundred hours during the busiest times of the season. To date, since I started, I utilized, uh, an assistant for a hundred and fifty-eight hours, um, which was two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. For, as far as office expenses, it is going up for, the request that I'm making is going up four hundred and eighty dollars. I would love to add to the budget a language line, which is an interpretation, um, which the police department utilizes. With that, the charge would be, uh, minutes to minutes, three dollars and ninety-five cents. I'm anticipating that I will utilize a hundred and twenty minutes. I've had several people that I've met with that had to bring their neighbor in to interpret, um, or they've missed, they didn't answer my call, some gal hung up on me and she almost missed a, a holiday food basket. I was able to, I called back a couple of times and was able to talk to her grandchild. So, they, um, interpret in, in over two hundred and forty languages and also they utilize, um, sign language. So, if there's somebody that is hard of hearing or relies on sign language, they can interpret via the computer video.
Megan, I'm just, uh, where in the budget is that item?
That's. Under off, office expenses?
The increase of four.
Four hundred and eighty dollars, yeah.
Thank you.
As far as my dues in education, I am, um, looking to decrease that to five hundred dollars, um, which is a five hundred dollar decrease. Looking to do free education programs through the municipalities and also being that the position does not require a license, I don't want the taxpayers to have to reimburse for my education. For mileage expense, I'm also decreasing that from five hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars, um, going tag along with people to the conferences that I've been to so far and the home visits are just in Bethel. For the Bethel Emergency Fund, that seems to, um, be working and I would love to keep it at six thousand five hundred dollars. To let you all know, I, I am a believer in not Band-Aid solutions. So, I have worked closely with community resources, including ARC, um, who had a grant for energy assistance and water utilities. And they were able to fund two thousand and sixteen nine dollars of maybe resources that I would have utilized. So, that was through the Association of Religious Communities and they told me that because of me, they spent their grant money. And also, Anne over there and Paula did call everybody that was delinquent, uh, because it was for people that were delinquent, uh, for utilities and they were able to, um, encourage people to use that grant as well. So, they benefited from that. As far as the non-governmental organ, non-government organizations, I am requesting the same amount of twenty thousand dollars. We rely heavily on the organizations that are in the community, um, to help support the needs of the residents of Bethel. Eviction storage, um, I am requesting an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for that because we've had six, for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen to seventeen, there were six evictions that I could see. And to date, we've had four. Um, one of the persons that were evicted did pay his storage fee in total. But we've had, uh, two people that didn't and Lisa and I went to do the auction. Unfortunately, we didn't recoup any money from that. But we're thinking outside the box. I talked to Mr. Nicka Barker about the possibilities of getting a storage unit on, at our municipal center. So that we can utilize that, that would cut the cost. The marshals would then just bring the stuff to the storage unit here. The highway department wouldn't have to use their manpower to empty the storage unit when nobody buys anything from that. So, that is something that I would consider fundraising for or something.
Giving like a pod, like this.
Yeah.
Similar.
Simp- right, right. And also, um, with the stuff that's in the storage unit, we are working with Litchfield Pickers. I don't know if anyone saw the newspaper article, but there was an article in the paper for, uh, this pickers that they actually come to homes. They take everything out. So, I do have an appointment with them on the twenty-eighth, they're supposed to empty out the storage unit. So, maybe it will be no cost. We're talking maybe tag sales, we'll see what we can do. But I am keeping, I am increasing that to two hundred and fifty.
I'm just curious, um, if there may be a liability issue of storing other people's things on municipal property.
There may be. Mr. Nicka Barker was going to, uh, touch base with the attorney.
Yeah, I'm waiting for a ruling on that. That's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That, that was the same concern I had too.
Yeah.
Right. So, if anything, we could work with Litchfield Pickers and I can call as soon as I know of an eviction, ask them to come out on the sixteenth day, set up an appointment and then we'll only have to worry about the two weeks. So, right now, I'm asking for that, but there may be ways that I won't utilize any of that, which is what I'm hoping. That's it. Oh, yeah, that's it. Does anybody have a question?
Well, do you utilize all of that twenty thousand dollars?
We're, we're going to be utilizing that, right, for the, yeah. We, we haven't given it out all yet, but we will be.
Normally what happens is we, we have the list of the different organizations and there's like seven or eight of them. And the total adds up to a little bit more than a twenty, it's probably close to thirty thousand dollars. But Megan, myself and Matt will sit down and say, okay, based on last year, this is what we gave out. And we normally pare it down to somewhere around seventeen-five, uh, leaving just a little bit for an emergency fund, you know, during the course of the year.
Thank you.
So, I, I'm sorry, I'm here to the board, but what kind of organizations are there? Who's included in that?
Like regional hospice.
Go ahead.
Ability Beyond Disability, um, we have a, a lot, what else?
Visiting nurse.
Visiting nurse, the Historical Society.
If you go to TAP, uh, what is it, four or five? The other night I brought that up.
Yeah, those were the donations?
Not four or five, four hundred.
Meals on Wheels Women's Center.
Yeah, We Care.
We think you gave us a separate list, didn't you, Bob?
It's in four hundred, yeah. It adds up to twenty-six thousand five eighty-five.
Right. Megan, I have a question on the emergency fund. Um, we're at sixty-five hundred, you're requesting. Is it? That if you had more money, you'd be able to serve more people or is it everybody gets served, but not as much as you would like?
Well, you know, any, it, it changes day to day, the needs of people. So, it would be for, you know, emergent needs that maybe we do have a, I don't know if everybody's familiar, but we have the Community Council of Bethel and we rely on donations to help meet needs. Say somebody does not have, um, dental insurance or they do and it's not covering their, their dentures or dental work. And that would be something that they'd have to meet the eligibility, be under certain income and assets to qualify, but that is something that would be utilized for, but an emergency need. If somebody, um, we had somebody lose power, they were on an oxygen concentrator and we had to help them, uh, through, in a hotel.
But we've exhausted all the other agencies before we use that fund, right?
Yeah, um, I mean, in the hotel case, no, I mean, I did work with Salvation Army and they were able to, um, utilize some monies for that. So, my goal is never to utilize, I actually haven't paid, uh, the town hasn't paid one dime on energy assistance this year because I'm very proactive with connecting them to the right community resources. Come in, meet with me. Do, are you familiar with this agency or feel familiar with that? I've establishing relationships and the gal like at ARC said, the next time that they get a grant, they're going to call me to let me know. So, we haven't spent anything on energy assistance thus far because, so it would be, it would be something urgent, of urgent need. But yeah, definitely, I, I've, I've made referrals to, um, local food pantries, United Way, Ability Beyond, the Connecticut Department of Housing, Legal Services, Salvation Army, Alzheimer's Resource Center, Area Interest in Aging. So, I try to utilize the services so that they can maybe utilize, the, the funds could be utilized for a program that doesn't already exist to help them.
Now, are some of the clients ongoing clients or you get random new people?
Yes, I get random, I, I get, I get new people frequently. Um, there are a couple, there are, there are a majority of people that utilize the same big resources, like the Brotherhood in Action, Food Basket. Most of them that have children utilize the holiday gift giving program. However, I do see a lot of people, at least a hundred and twenty-one, since I wrote this narrative, since I started in September. So, most of, maybe five percent are, are repeat that come in for me needing different assistance outside of the food pantry and, yeah, holiday gifts.
And Megan, they're all Bethel residents?
Yes, they're all Bethel residents. I do have them verify that with their driver's license.
You want to tell them about the grant, the Union, um, United Way grant?
Um, sure. So, for those of you that you don't know about, the United Way, um, gave us a, gave us a grant and it was eight thousand dollars and it was for children to participate in activities that they may not be able to afford, whether it be arts, entertainment, uh, exercise. So, we have utilized a little over five thousand dollars and. I know that, it's like two thousand and five hundred dollars.
I would say about twenty-five hundred has gone to kids to be able to take park and rec programs and, and one of them is like a theater program, which is a fairly higher, uh, program cost-wise. And she was able to fund several kids to be able to do that, which is, which is really good.
And instead of the town having to pay half of the cost, each child gets up to three hundred dollars for activities. So, we're offsetting the cost too for, for park and rec. We're thinking of fundraising activities, so, um, you know.
Is this going to be an ongoing grant?
Well, we are getting it again this year.
Wow, that's great.
And they are doing an after-school program grant that I'm applying for too to help offset the cost of the after-school program. That's probably my, one of my busiest times is the people that utilize, uh, park and rec activities and the camps and be born after-school program.
And then the other program is the bell ringing. Want to talk about that? That, that brings in money too.
Mm-hmm, yes, um, through Salvation Army. You may have seen me out in the snow this winter, ringing the Salvation Army bell.
At the transfer station?
At the every, yeah, I was like all over. So, um, I, my little team, mostly my family and neighbors, raised, uh, over five hundred dollars. And, you know, every year I hope to increase that, nine, ninety percent of that money is go right back to the town. So, they keep it, but if somebody needs, needs something, such as a hotel room or something, then, um, I would go through the Salvation Army and they would help cover the costs.
Can you open that up to, um, high school kids who need to be serviced?
Yes, yes, and I worked. I know. I was just starting and, and it was, you know, Thanksgiving and everything at once, I thought it would just be.
She was just hired when the program started, so she was just kind of thrown out.
I was just trying to make it happen at that point. So, yeah, it was good. But I already have people on that were, that have the basketball team and a Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. So yeah, I'm going to get the word out to everybody. So whoever wants to volunteer, because I'd love to, really. We're, we're competing with Newtown. It's just like a woman, woman show, and they have a big team. So I want to get that for Bethel.
Might want to point out that the six thousand, or is that an eight? For your part-time person, Megan?
Yes.
That's eight?
Six.
Six, yes.
Six, alright, thank you. Bigger print, please.
About four.
It's not Megan, it's me. So make them out to cheat.
That's really was in the total budget for the director last year.
Yeah.
So it's not an extra position.
Right.
Yeah, it was planned that way.
Yeah, it's the same, same amount as last year, but we just worked with the hours of the rest too.
You know what I'm trying to say to you about?
No, I heard four hundred dollars.
The eight thousand for the part-time work.
Six.
Six.
Six thousand. Was in her budget last year. But it was under the directors. And she had a part-time person this year that she utilized that money for. And so I'm just trying to point out.
I see.
So it's not an extra position.
Right. The same exact amount is under the salary between last year and this year.
It's not, it's not a new position.
Well, it is a part-time position. But basically, the salary, it was all in the director's salary line, as a line item. So it isn't a reversal, but it's still coming out to the same sum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other question? You guys have any other questions today?
Megan, great job.
I should, it should be yesterday, because I feel like a red Valentine. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to invite Rosemary Siwanup. She's my assistant.
And this is Lisa Plum, who is, and you are, you've been our director for the senior-
Six years. Six years.
I was going to say.
Yep. And I'm equally terrified each year to be here. So the Bethel Senior Center is doing well and thriving. We've had a few changes since last year. The senior center office was relocated to accommodate the larger crowds and the staffing needs. A new reception desk was placed in the hallway to ease the flow of members signing up for programs and to take the burden off of staff having large crowds in the office. The population of the senior center has grown consistently over the past five years. Census projections are that from two thousand six to twenty thirty, the number of residents sixty-five years of age and older will grow by fifty-three percent. Along with the increase of the baby boomers' population, there's an increase in longevity. So in other words, there are more senior citizens, and they're living longer. The past three years, we've recognized this in our own senior center. And because of this, I'm asking you, for the third year, to please increase the hours for the assistant director. She is currently at twenty-five hours. I need an additional eleven hours, and here's why. Our roster of members have increased dramatically. If you'd please look at the first graph. In two thousand twelve, we had fifty-one new members. That's the year I started. Following year, we had two hundred and eight new members. And you can see on the graph, it goes three ninety-one, three twenty-two, three sixty-three, three fourteen, to a total membership now of twenty forty-nine. This shows-
Can I ask a quick question about that graph? Do I still have it up?
Sure.
Sure, Megan.
Is, so the, the red bars indicate the new members in that year?
Yes.
So, so each graph adds to the total at the bottom? It's, I'm not-
So in two thousand fourteen, there were three hundred and ninety-one new members.
Okay.
In two thousand fifteen, three hundred and twenty-two new members signing up.
Do you have members fall off?
Oh, yes. They move away and they pass away.
Do you have another chart with your total members?
Pardon me?
Do you have another chart with your total members?
We do. Yep. This shows the average number of new members to the senior center is three forty-eight. This means meeting with each of them, having them complete paperwork, taking them on a tour of the facility, and explaining many of our forty activities offered throughout the week that they may be interested in. The second graph shows our participation records. This graph shows the total number of members participating in programs the last three years. Two thousand fourteen to fifteen, we had twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-three people participating in activities. Fifteen to sixteen, twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-one. And sixteen to seventeen, twenty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-one. The third graph breaks down the participation monthly over a three-year period.
Are those individual people or those people who might come?
People may repeat. It's participation. So we have to document everybody that comes to an activity. So they might do three activities a week.
And Lisa, I'm sorry, I may have taken a bad note. Did you say there were about two thousand and eighty total members?
Yes.
So that'd be about ten events, a little bit more per member.
Okay, the senior center offers forty programs weekly. Documentation must be done. Participation must be documented, class lists. Money received for activities must be documented, as well as income from trips, events, and memberships, and all sent to the finance department. Special events, lectures, and parties must also be planned and coordinated. For example, every Friday, we offer a lunch and learn program. We have a guest speaker from the area speaking on aging-related topics. Often, doctors, lawyers, pharmacists, home care directors come in to speak. This has been a wonderful program, giving information to our members, and they all receive a free lunch as a bonus. To run these programs, it requires a great deal of time. Then there's our trips. Whether it's a day trip or an international trip, such as our upcoming trip, a Viking Riverboat cruise to Budapest, we meet with tour companies, plan itineraries, come up with prices, coordinate transportation, advertise and market the program, and keep in constant contact with the tour companies, schedule members, et cetera. I'm happy to say that our new van has been well-received and is being used more frequently each week. We've spent time marketing our van, visiting the two communities, the two senior communities in town, and advertising in area publications. Having the new van has increased our workload in the office. People are calling to make appointments, and we're coordinating with the drivers. We're required to keep daily paperwork of all people riding the van, a regulation of our grant, and keep up with the daily and quarterly reports due to the state. Most senior centers that have a van also have a part or full-time scheduler. Because of the high demands in the senior center, the senior center must run like a business. This involves organization, programming, accounting, marketing, evaluations, staff meetings, et cetera. At the same time, we're running the senior center in its daily routine, including the programs and its problems. Recently, I conducted a survey to determine the satisfaction of the members. The question asks, we're about the facility, the programs, the cleanliness, and the performance of the staff. The range was between eighty-two and ninety-one percent. One of the comments made on the survey is that people would like to have more hot meals served at the senior center. After the survey was completed, I met with a group of members who gave me feedback on the meal program offered at the senior center. They suggested that hot meals be served at least once a week and side dishes with their meals. They also suggested that the menu be posted so people know in advance the choice for meals. We accommodated all of their requests. The new meal program began February first. Shortly before that, I met with Matt about offering a congregate meal program at the senior center. A congregate meal program is a discounted meal provided by an outside agency to senior centers. Many area senior centers offer this program throughout the state of Connecticut. To offer it at the Bethel Senior Center, it would cost an additional sixty-eight hundred dollars in staffing, which is required through the program. Matt and I mutually agreed to offer the improved program in the senior center for the time being and not offer the congregate meal plan. To benefit, the benefit for the seniors having a new meal program is the fact that we accommodated their suggestions. Sharing a meal for many seniors, especially those that live alone, is an important part of their day. They enjoy socializing together. Research has proven that seniors that engage in meaningful programs together, including sharing a meal and socializing, decreases their feeling of loneliness, isolation, and depression. The concern for the meal program is that we simply do not have enough staff to run the program. In addition to these responsibilities, I am the social services director's supervisor. And there are added responsibilities. Megan and I work closely together. We meet weekly, if not daily. We conduct home visits together, which requires documenting after the visit and informing the appropriate agencies. Follow-up is usually required. We are involved in the eviction process together should someone have to be evicted from their home. Separate from these responsibilities, I'm the municipal agent, which requires home visits on my own, separate from those done with Megan. It also involves meeting with people, giving them information and referrals. I'm asking for the assistant director's hours to increase eleven hours. This increase would allow us to implement the food program. It would allow us to properly schedule the van and complete the required reports. It would enable us to have more time for someone to be in the office completing paperwork that needs and is required to be done, and to have consistency in full-time staff. I've taken a survey from all Connecticut towns concerning their senior center staffing. All towns that have a similar or greater population as our own do have a full-time assistant. And I do have the surveys available that Rosemary will pass out. The last bit of information I would like to give you is the revenue that the senior center has given to the town of Bethel over the past three years. In two thousand sixteen, we gave the town of Bethel thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. In two thousand seventeen, we gave the town thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. To date, in two thousand eighteen, seventeen to eighteen, we gave the town forty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, which is a grand total of one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars the past three years that was not there before. So I'm asking you to please consider increasing the assistant director's position eleven hours. The other things I wanted to mention were the capital equipment. I'm asking for twenty-five chairs in the activity room. We currently have chairs that have wheels on it. A couple of years ago, we replaced the chairs in the main eating area, we call the cafeteria, not the cafeteria, the social room. And we haven't had any accidents since that time. We have sled-bottomed chairs. We had rolling chairs before. We had about a half a dozen accidents prior to that. Within the past six months, I had one woman go out by ambulance from falling out of a wheelchair in the activity room. And I would like to replace all those chairs, get rid of them in the senior center because they pose a safety hazard. The other two items are the renovation of the garage. I would like that to be considered on the capital budget, if not this year, in the future. I, I had a quote from DeMarco Construction of twenty-five thousand dollars to make that into an activity room because we're running out of space. I can't have as many programs as I would like to in the senior center because we just don't have the room to run them. And the following, the final request is the renovation of the cafe bathrooms that the seniors have really requested for years. It was never finished when the building was renovated. So in the main gym downstairs, it used to be the cafeteria. It's where we have all our exercise programs and parties. It's utilized five days a week, all day long. It's also used, utilized by Park and Recreation in the evening having programs. There's two bathrooms in there, and neither one of them work. So if we could get those functional, and they gave us a quote for eighteen thousand dollars each on those.
So thirty-six dollars?
Yes.
Those never worked, Lisa?
No. No. And it's a long way for the seniors to walk from down there to the bathroom is up around the corner, around another corner, and down the other hallways. It's quite a distance. The other thing is, I would think that it's a safety problem for the scouts and the different groups that are in that room to allow the children to go throughout the building without supervision. So.
What's being, what's in the garage now? I know they used to-
In the garage now is housekeeping and things. We'd be happy to accommodate those in a closet that we have. Or I don't know if there's room where Tommy's office used to be, down in that area where the workroom is for maintenance.
It's also used as a, like a receiving dock for the building.
Yes.
Do you know how many?
Sorry.
Do you know how many square feet it is?
I don't know how many square feet it is.
They run a cord up.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
Well, it's a garage, so it was probably-
Twenty by twelve.
Yeah.
It has lights and heat in it already?
Fifteen by thirteen.
I think it's fourteen by ten. Probably by fourteen by ten, fifteen by ten.
It does have lighting, and it has heat, and it has a sink with running water.
And Lisa, if we weren't able to do the full funding for your assistant to go full-time, would additional hours be of help?
Like eleven hours?
I know. You don't make the steps sometimes.
Yeah. Anything would certainly help.
That person is currently full, considered full-time.
No, it's Rosemary's position, and she's twenty-five hours right now. So I'm asking for another eleven hours would make her full-time, yes.
Yeah, well, Wendy, the, under state law, full-time benefits kick in at thirty anyway, so.
It's thirty.
Yeah.
We just really need help downstairs. It's crazy busy. It's, it's growing year, every year with all the programs that we're offering.
No, you-
I'm just having a little hard time following the numbers in the presentation. And I'm only picking on it because I think it may show a better case than what it's actually showing. Our cover sheet shows an increase of about fifty-three thousand, fifty-two, eight, fifty-nine. The support sheet shows an increase of about twenty-seven, nine.
An increase in what?
A total increase of fifty-two, eight, fifty-nine. And the detail sheet-
Fifty-two, eight, fifty-nine for increase in activities or increase in the overall budget?
The total. The total. Of two forty-one, five, fifteen.
So Bob, can you help me with that? Is that with the trip?
Well, I would go with the summary sheet. I'm, I've had a couple of problems with the referencing on the Excel because things were moved around. So I would definitely go with the two forty-one, five, fifteen. That's a true number. The number's down at the bottom. You know, for the increase, the fifty, because we're tying into the prior budget here on the first one.
Okay, so in, to that end, while we're trying to tie it to what our comparative should be.
Yep.
I believe the budget twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen should reflect seventy-one on the second line in the one oh five account and not the fifty-one. So the increase is not fifty-two, eight, fifty-nine, but rather twenty-seven, nine, nineteen.
The difference there is last year in the wage adjustment account, there's money for the van driver. So the detail sheet shows the twenty thousand as if it was in Lisa's account, but it was actually in the wage adjustment account. Because we didn't know when the van was gonna start. So for the detail breakdown, the twenty thousand's there, so it didn't look like you're going from zero to thirty. Some of the offset is wage adjustment. So that's why there's a difference between, because the summary ties up to the actual budget. But the detail ties out to the money that was allocated.
So that twenty thousand, Brad, you can just allocate somewhere in the stack of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen?
Yeah, it was in the four twenty, I think it's four twenty account that has wage.
The wage adjustments.
Lisa.
Four twenty.
So that, the words is, is line one oh five.
You mislined those chances?
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes.
The line one oh five assistant center director, that's one amount, but how does that break down? How many assistant center directors do you have?
I have three staff. And I don't know, Brad, if the drivers are in there?
Yeah, if you look at the summary sheet where it says assistant center directors, you've got forty-two thousand, six eighty-two, which is the new number for the first assistant. Then you have two eleven thousand, six oh sevens for the second and third assistant, and then the van driver at thirty-two. So that total adds up to ninety-seven, eight, ninety-six.
Lisa, you, the senior center is now charging a membership fee for, for people who are non-Bethel residents, correct?
Correct, right. So we started in July first, the fiscal year of charging twenty dollars. So we're estimating we're gonna bring in about five thousand dollars from out-of-town people. Bethel memberships are free. This is only for out-of-town members.
When did you start that again?
We started July first.
Is that attributed to some of that chart, the increase?
It actually, this year, there was a little decrease in the participation because some people that were from out-of-town dropped out. We have a group that does maybe only the casinos, so they don't come to the senior center and participate in daily things. And some of those folks dropped out. Does that answer your question?
Back to the assistant director, so Bob, maybe Bob knows this. So last year, fifty-one, six, four, eight, how is that break down?
So that would be the assistant plus two eight, right Bob?
Yeah, take the twenty thousand out.
The driver.
It's the exact same thing, but the twenty thousand was in wage adjustments.
Right.
Yeah, so if you look at the twenty-nine thousand and the two eleven, three twenty fours on the first page.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board of managers?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have Nancy's teaching a class.
We're gonna skip around a little bit to have Laura Vassil from the health department go next. One of our registrars is teaching a class at the moment. So please welcome Laura Vassil.
I did a, an assessment for you of staffing in the local health departments to complement my request. And not only do I show you staffing for local health departments, but I also show you where we are as a community, the services being provided to whom. And, and my request, everything is remaining the same except for when it comes to staffing. You may recall, for several years, I told you there was a public health shortage, and that's starting to improve slowly. It is definitely time to reinstate the full-time person that we had and we maintained in the budget. Because we're still having a little difficulty finding contracted services workers, except for Fridays and the weekends, and good thing we have them. And then with the contracted services, I have requested that we increase it. All of the services that you see in our narrative that I, I know it's lengthy, but I'd like you to know what we're doing for whom and let you see it. Those are legally mandated services. I have great partners and colleagues, and I'm working with most of them. Lisa, Megan, and I have dealt with many situations where people had no heat. Or they were in situations that we have some legal responsibilities to respond to, and I had to do that with Attorney Lawler. We have some people that Megan did a terrific job in getting the probate court to get involved and resolve their issues. On the second page, if you flip over to This Is Us, This Is Bethel. When I did the fourth fee comparison for the selectmen who are really going to help with the fees. Because I think this will help, it's the second page of my handout that I just gave you, This Is Bethel. So that's, our population, as you know, is almost twenty thousand. Our households are seven thousand, two hundred and eleven. Our rental property is fifteen seventy-five. We have more rental property than Trumbull. When I did our fee analysis, I, I'm out on the streets and so is the staff all the time because we're a human service organization. We do a lot of assessment, a lot of reports, but we are out and about providing service. Even though they're legally mandated, they are, their services, quality services. And I was, the team and I, when we looked at Trumbull, we looked at Bethel based on our density, based on our location next to a city. Based on our business, our rental property, what I see with the police, the building officials. We are, we are serving twenty-one percent of our rental housing market. You could see that people, whether they're owners or renters, if you go down, you don't have to know all this tonight, that's why I gave it to you. Thirty percent of the people are putting, are spending their money on their housing, so they take it very seriously. And rental housing issues are very complicated and they take hours of time to resolve. We have about three thousand wells, three thousand septic systems, twelve hundred businesses. Shout out to the other departments that helped share that data with me. If you flip it over, we are regular partners with our grocery stores, our food businesses. You may know that, look at the healthcare institutions, Bethel Healthcare. And Maplewood, our beautiful Maplewood Cascades, Duracell's a phenomenal partner, and then the whole towns. We are, we are a high-volume service department. And you can, you can see it, I have also what I give you every year, which is our output. And we need the staff to do what we need to do. And I am open to your questions.
There are ten public pools?
Yes, they're, what, if a, they're condominium pools. And so if, and with condominium pools under the state laws, if the visitors can go into them, then they are considered public pools. And if you have public pools, we are mandated to inspect them, monitor them, and make sure that waterborne disease does not occur. And no, and that's why I put it on there, so I'm glad, that's why I wanted to put it out there. Many times, I know Matt knows about the volume of services. The police are wonderful partners. I see three shifts some days, I'm not proud of that. And when I look at it, I, you know, we're a remarkable town. I, I think even if you saw a building was down, in many ways, I find that we're doing so much with properties. I think that hopefully some of the technical bill, staff can be billed out better. And I know I have to sit with Matt, he hasn't been able to see me, so I could do what I need to do best for you out in the streets. But I think we're gonna try to bill out to at least cover some of these costs, if the selectmen find it acceptable.
Are, are we looking at fees now?
Yes. I, just so you know, I've got a recommendation from Laura just last weekend. Between my schedule and hers in the last seven days, we haven't had time to go over it, but it'll probably be on your agenda, if not the meeting we have to go on after.
Is this gonna be similar to our surrounding towns, Laura, would you say?
I, I try to be like you've always asked me, right in the middle. Now, you might go lower, I'm not recommending it because you have, we haven't acted in twenty years. So that, well, I'm trying to, I try to, I don't try not to bring, you know, I'm always trying to shoot for deposit. So we need to address that because there's a lot of businesses that also use public health services.
Laura, do you happen to know, Mary Bob, what type of revenue do you generate through?
Well, you know that I track everything because we have to do like fifteen other reports that we don't get paid for by the state. So in here, unless I left it at the health department, I was gonna hand it out to you. Oh, I have it. This was the revenue for the year. And understand, when you look at these, our fees are twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars. So times it by each item that you see, when you wanna see what the output is versus the money coming back. So Paul, it was, excuse me. No one, no one escapes. Seventeen, six, thirty. Seventeen, six hundred and thirty dollars. So this is our output that you always asked me for. I wasn't gonna do it, I'll be honest with you, but then I knew someone would make sure that.
Someone right here.
So that was our, that was our output that I have promised you and provided to you for many, many years.
Thank you.
You will see that when, if, when you look at what our town is and where we're going, they do match up. And we, we are very, very busy in our town. So the, the state of Connecticut, some of you may know, has, have gone to the Food and Drug Administration food regulations. And we are working with all the food businesses now to make that transition. And I bring that up because when we do billing, it'll just be different billing that will air to the Food and Drug Administration and their framework that the state has decided to adopt. So I just, so I, I'm not trying to inundate you with what we do, but at the same time, I like to show you where your money's going. And I, I need the help. We need the help. We haven't paid out. I don't wanna hex myself, whereas Wood. I feel like Town Council has helped me protect our money and resolve very, very complicated problems quietly and effectively. You know, every couple, every year we have a couple TV cases. We've kept them under control. We have not had secondary cases. And, you know, I'm open to, you know.
So listen, in contracted services, there's public health contracts, et cetera. Can you just talk to that a little bit?
Yeah. Well, those are the staff that work on the different variety of services that we provide. So, and one got dropped, I see, but these contracted people, public health is on seven days a week. Some of the food businesses, even the town, has added so many food events and community, public events that we have legal obligation to have food inspectors at. So when you, when we go to contracted services, I try to detail for you, we have a hundred and twenty-five licensed kitchens. We have eighty nonprofit organizations, you have that in your data, that will work with us every year. They're nonprofits, we don't bill them. I don't even recommend you bill them, but that'll be up to you. Because the goal's food protection. They give their money for their organizations, their churches, their Girl Scouts, the cadets. The money goes for all kinds of supplemental work that is done by these phenomenal organizations in town, but I will hear to you of that. So the food, the food inspector, they work, and they work with a hundred and twenty-five food service establishments. And they work with the eighty nonprofit organizations, and then all the community events that Park and Rec and the town and the Chamber of Commerce do. The, and that's their staff hours and that's their cost for our certifications. And then one staff person, as Chris said, we are the busiest sometimes, spring to October. So much goes on, and then there is a supplemental person to cover these events if the person that's working Monday through Friday can't do that. So that's the second party that you see twenty hours a week at eight weeks. That's, that's the number two. If you go through three, three thirteen, you'd see one staff sixteen hours a week. So they don't get any, they get paid by the hour. They do their work, they have to produce reports, and then they go. The next person's only twenty hours a week, thirty-five an hour, and they do a hundred and sixty hours. The next person, we have a point zero nine FTE. So I gave you some FTE ideas, so you could really see how lean we keep it. The point zero six FTE is the technician that helps me produce this phenomenal assessments that you receive. The reports for the selectmen, and then the reports that are mandated to the state, and she gets, she's point zero six. And she is thirty-seven an hour, and she gets four thousand a year. And then there is a, there are times, and it's increasing. Condominium rental complaints are getting very complicated. And the level of complaint, when it comes to indoor air quality, HVAC systems. What's happening with the building and air turnaround. So there have been times when someone's been ill and they are adamant it's their rental unit. And I have brought in an industrial hygienist with me to add our skills to make sure we've assessed this properly and resolved it with our town attorney so we can move on. Another thing, we sometimes have vacant buildings. The health department goes out. We make an assessment with our skills and we say there's no rats there. There's five hundred additional calls because they don't believe the health department that there's no rats there. And once in a while, the best money we ever spent, seventy dollars, we spend the colleagues I work with bedbugs on out. Who confirms, they don't work for me, I'm not associated with them, a second opinion that they did not find rats either. And sometimes that second opinion helps when there's arguing parties who aren't believing anybody. That's the thousand. And so that's the contracted services. The, I aired to the leaders, they are using the health department accounts to show what the collaboration that you do with the Bethel V and A. And I've always supported them, but that money's go for what you, the town gets from the Bethel V and A. Does it help the local health department operate every seven days a week? And the regional household hazardous waste day that I think you all participate in and does help the town. But I don't consider those numbers the primary numbers for the operation of Bethel Health Department.
Laura, you used to have a full-time sanitarium.
And then if I remember correctly, we couldn't get anybody. Because our salary was too low.
Right.
And then, and then it was a shortage. As the baby boomers have retired, I am the bottom of that. As they retired, a lot of public health professionals have not been coming into this line of work. And actually, nationally, if you Googled it, you will still see the caution about it in the next generation. It's, if you love it, it is, you're never bored. But it is, you are active and you are, you are working. So, so I am a little concerned, but the market seems to be getting better for professionals. What I told Bob is, I calculated and I air to finance people, but a one full-time FTE is about eighteen sixty-five in hours. We need those hours, Monday through Friday, and then I've asked for about, I, we really, I calculated this and tried to keep it lean. About one thousand four hundred contracted hours helps us get through a seven-day work week. And then Attorney Lawler said you could always look on his billing to see all the work that he has done with us so that we could, you know, resolve problems and have the great community.
So you're looking to hire a full-time?
To reinstate it.
Okay, well, it is.
And keep the contracted services.
And do you feel that for continuity, that it would make more sense to have a full-time employee versus contracted?
I'm suggesting that we, we, I, it's been so long, I'm saying in my budget, we need both. They couldn't possibly keep up. You don't know it because I have made up for the shortage. I don't recommend it, but I did.
Would you repeat that? So you personally have filled in the hours that you, to perform the sanitarian service?
As best as I could.
Okay. Okay.
You do too much. But it is appreciated.
But now we need, we need to have the professional people working. I think that if the fee schedule could get put in line, it will cover some of the costs. Um, with events, we talk about it, Eileen and I, how can we, if you add food service at a park, we have to add an inspector's time at the park. When we do food truck Fridays, we have to have, by law, we're covering you. We have, uh, statutory obligations. It is food protection to us, but we also have statutory obligations. Uh, the rental housing, I'm hoping it'll work out for us. Um, I've also asked Matt if, um, they, uh, the town could look at rental housing and some of the creative, uh, programs out there in the country and try to have a volunteer rental housing program. So that, uh, we could be proactive with healthy, uh, housing that doesn't have a lot of code violations instead of what we're going through right now. We have a, we, I gave you that sheet so you could see, a lot of our housing is older. That's all through the Northeast. So we have more issues with that than we do with younger housing.
Explain what, no, you just go down with the volunteer, just explain what that is.
Um, in the, uh, I think Attorney Lawler, when he had to help us relocate people, uh, because of an incident last year, he had talked to us about Norwalk and that, and then some other, uh, places in the country where, um, there could be a voluntary system that if, uh, property owners who are landlords wanna be part of it, they would pay a certain amount of money that they agreed to pay for a year. And they would get inspections from health and building for rental housing code compliance and then a list would be maintained. And they could use it for their marketing purposes. It happens, I understand, in different parts of the country more than I've ever heard in the Northeast.
So when do, um, when do apartments get inspected? Is it when there's a new tenant? They never do?
New and by complaint. And right now, the load on complaint is very high. Our rental housing is more than trouble. The last two years I've been inundated with Attorney Lawler and resolving rental housing problems. So I, I think, and I think there's a win in there somehow. I, I think we have some very, very good landlords. I think that some of the housing market's old. And, um, I think that, you know, that's something that I would like to see in the future. I think that, I gave you projections about, um, Bethel remaining, um, very attractive for more rental housing. And I believe that it's happening and so do a lot of other stakeholders in our community. Uh, as I think when I wrote it for you, out on Route Six next year, we all approved the concept and construction's gonna start soon. Actually, we've been hoping they wouldn't wait till the last minute. Um, when you look at the last page, um, these are projects that are gonna go underway. Um, Thirty-Six Stony Hill Road, the farms, it's a hundred and seventeen multifamily rental units and six buildings that we've approved that Chris was telling you about, that, um, we're hoping they start, um, the construction and get that underway. But those, and so with the new ones, of course, for many years will be okay. It'll be later that it'll be like some of the rental units that we're dealing with now. It's when it gets older that the issues crop up.
Is that by, uh, town, I don't know what the legal part is, but is that, um, by town law or state that there's no requirement for any inspection, like when a new tenant, you know, it goes to me, it seems like if you could go for fifty years and it's still, you know, Thomas Edison did the wiring, I mean, that's a problem.
That's life. That's exactly how it is. That's where we are in trouble and that's where a lot of my time in the last three years has been. Uh, because it's by complaint. So we are obligated by the law for the code enforcement, no matter what the age of the housing stock is.
Did you want me to comment a little more?
Uh, I'm, uh, I'm only-
Yeah, well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask, so, so does, I think the question is, is there a state or local law that gives us the ability to inspect apartments when it, when there's a change in the tenant?
No. No, the answer, thank you. The answer's no.
Or is there a way to, you know, I'm not a big fan of coordinates, as I've not known.
That's why I said voluntary, neither are, are help people, because we already have so much to do. We, we wouldn't add any other thing that we possibly would wanna add. That's why I used the word voluntary.
It would seem a little more, a little less chaotic if you, if, if you had a schedule of places, you know, of-
Well, that would be a stat.
Doesn't town have, uh, fire marshals or multifamily?
Yeah, yeah, anything that's above one and two family, the fire marshal test.
Above one and two, that's the smallest- So for fire marshal, not for the rent, not for the rental housing code.
Laura, I have a question. If we couldn't do full-time for a, um, Chief of Environmental Health Services, like part-time help?
Well, I'm, Matt and I, and Matt told me to put it all out and then, uh, we're talking about shutting the door, uh, at a minimum one day a week and then we'll take it from there. If that will, uh, help us, uh, get in a better balance, then, uh, that will be one of the things that we are contemplating or it could be up to two. Uh, in the springtime into summer, it's a high, high-volume business and so that's where we're at.
Well, I, I think, uh, I think the, if I understand the question, she wants to know if, um, if it's possible to, how, how have you been handling the, the inspector slash sanitarian to now? Do you have contract people that do it? Or have you literally done everything yourself?
I, I have, uh, not taken five days in four or five years. Um, so I have done-
So you're doing it, you're doing it yourself.
I've, I've made up some of a person's time, uh, that you see here under contracted services.
Okay.
And then I have, um, uh, and so we have contracted people, but we're, it's just not enough. When you look at hours of full-time FTEs, about eighteen seventy-six, I think, I wrote it for you somewhere. And then I asked, in fact, for, um, I asked for fourteen seventy-seven to maintain, but I delineated that by service. So they have different, uh, they have, so if you look at different offices and you look at their functions, it's not gonna be that dissimilar. Uh, I had, when you look only at the Health Department budget number and you don't include the phenomenal Bethel V and A or your, the phenomenal regional hazardous waste, and then you look over a twenty-year period, and then you look at the staffing in the region, you're gonna see that what every Health Department has, what I'm asking for, and we're just a little behind.
Right, no, I understand that, but if we couldn't see our way to give a full-time position right now.
Give as much as you can.
You would ta- you-
Give as much as you can.
Anything would be a help.
And then we're going to adjust. I've been honest, I always am, and we're gonna adjust accordingly.
Well, yeah, so the, the follow-up question is, are there individuals, licensed individuals? Let's say if you get into a month where there's big demand, new restaurants opening.
That's been the hard part.
But, but are, are there people out there that you can call on an hourly basis?
Not really.
Uh, let me, let me rephrase it, like, uh, freelancers?
I know, not really. They're, they're looking for full-time and like even when you get them, they want a certain amount of hours with you.
Okay.
Uh, and you're gonna, when you look at your staffing, if you, just so it can help you out, Wendy, because this is just a reinstatement of something that exists.
Right, right, yeah.
If you go to the first page and you look at staffing, these are the local health staffing, um, for, uh, all the agencies around us. So right now, uh, we have less staff than Fairfield who has fourteen thousand and five residents.
Oh, I'd give you two people.
No, 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 I'm not. I'm just trying to give you some, so that you understand when I'm talking about my managing the volume. I just, that's all.
I'm still stuck on a building going for fifty years, like a rental, with turnover, tenants turnover, tenants, that has no inspection whatsoever, whether it's for rats or frayed wires or what have you. Um, there are some people who will never complain, you know, they'll just name the rats. I mean, I, some people don't care.
I know, but, but most people believe, like, not to have regulations and they're happy.
Okay, and I'm one of those people, but in this case, I'm thinking that it would be more organized, like, okay, every five years, if you want to rent a apartment and it's a legal apartment, it just makes sense to me. It just seems like this way you're waiting, it's like, okay, we'll go.
Actually, we're just doing our legal obligations, right.
Right, I understand that, but I, do you want to get in on that?
I, yeah, I do, but I, I think it's actually, I hear, I get your point, and I think it's actually worse than that because, uh, Chris, you might wanna comment on this, there's actually more legal prohibitions for people to step onto private property in the absence of having either a complaint or a warrant. So it's like a-
And that's generally how I am.
So the, so the, the whole legal landscape has to change to allow inspection of, of rental properties.
We would never go anywhere where we didn't have the legal right and then our, no, no, I, no, I know you know. I just want you to know that.
I would get it.
And that's just not how the law is. Right now, it's by complaint and then we act and we go from there.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Chris is-
There's not a lot we can do legally, like say, for instance, uh, I'll give you an example. We go to a hotel room and we ask to step into the hotel room. The person can deny us and legally, we're not allowed to enter 'cause that's a private space to them. So there's a lot of First Amendment laws that have been written to protect people's homes, their apartments and things. So unless we get a complaint, for me as a building official, I can't go into a property unless one I'm invited or I have some type of permit that they have pulled for work that's done and then that gets us into those situations and then-
Don't get me wrong, I know that there are laws in place. I mean, I'm aware of that.
We know.
But guess what I'm thinking is working it into whatever, some kind of process where just like you charge a fee to get a permit or, you know.
Yeah, people, but that's, that's a law. That, that like happens at the legislative level.
Well, I didn't know if it ha- could happen.
No, no, that's what Matt was saying. It happens at the legislative level. That has to happen, uh, by the legislators.
We looked into that, just to give you the story. We had an ongoing blight complaint.
Oh, I remember the blight ordinance. I can remember that.
One of the, so it started out as a visual thing, but then eventually the individual who's complaining about the other property, um, I think in order to try to attract an inspection from somebody, then called up and said, well, I think the house is not safe, you know, be- because it, it looks so bad on the outside. It's gotta be unsafe on the inside. So Chris and I talked about that. So he, he, in order to step onto that property, unless he knocks on the door and, and says, by the way, somebody complained about your house, can I come in and take a look, which is like less than zero percent chance he's gonna get in, he would have to have cause to go get a warrant, an administrative warrant. So he'd have to be able to document for a judge, you know, like, um, a sagging roofline or something that would be clearly a public safety hazard to the occupant. Uh, and that's really, really hard to do. So the, the legal environment is tipped very much in favor of the property owner to not let us in. And to your question, that's an excellent question, no, the, the town has no ability to override that, 'cause that's in state law. 'Cause we were, we talked about that.
Okay, well, I just didn't know.
But, I mean, I, you're, you're going down the right path, you know, that, that's correct.
I don't usually go down that path, believe me, but it just seems a little, all right.
But you're saying that some landlords have voluntarily chosen to be part of an organization that does go through those kinds of inspections.
And it helps.
And they can market it and say, you know, we have a safe place for you bring your children to live, basically.
Right, and it, uh, it was in the paper. You Google it, Attorney in, uh, the paper and, uh, from Danbury, I had talked about it, I think, last year and was trying to promote it in Danbury. And I think they were lary, but, uh, going back, we respect people's rights and so, um, but it's by complaint and problem and it's very hard to get to the proactive end. And if there was a way, even if we did it with a quarter of them, if you look at fifteen hundred rental units and we're going to add another thou, maybe two thou, so these projections, I really spent a lot of time so you could see what people think we're gonna receive.
Chris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, and just the only comment is if the landlords do give permission, they're renting this space to a tenant, they would have to have some contractual arrangement with that tenant to also let us in to-
Oh, yeah, I know that thought. Um, but so this, I'm not gonna belabor this, but this consortia, maybe this could be part, you know, like, like you're incentivizing with the tax deferrals for businesses, but I mean, this would be a positive thing for building owners who have many units that they want to rent. Maybe something that has dovetails into the, um, Economic Development Commission or something that is just part of a process. And like the consortia where you say, you're gonna pay into this and then, you know, you'll, you'll get, you know, a certificate of-
What I like about that is the peer, the peer-to-peer action helps keep it, helps, um, keep it at a certain level.
If you like a restaurant rating in New York City.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Any more questions from Board of Finance?
More questions? Great, thank you.
Good job, thank you. We'll do the registrar voters and then try to take a very quick five, ten-minute break and then come back for the last two presentations.
This is my favorite department.
Mine too.
Ours too. So I'm Nancy Ryan. I'm one of your two registrars of voters, Tim Bevel's our other registrar of voters. Um, we just have some additional stuff we wanted to share, um, we'll talk about that. You might have to share. Make sure Dion gets one. Oh, good, okay.
So this is in addition to what's in our book?
It's kind of addition and there are a couple of things, um, well, first I'll say-
Oh, yeah, I guess it is, isn't it?
Yeah, that's why I put holes in it.
It goes a little paragraph.
Yeah, well, that's partly because, Tim, we had a little misunderstanding about who was sending what to Bob, so, um, it didn't get there in time to go in your official books. So Tim and I serve, um, kind of as co-department heads for registrar voters. We're also administrators of elections. Um, we just started our fourth year in office. We're elected, for those of you who don't know, on a two-year term, and we're elected in the, um, federal-state cycle, not on the municipal cycle. And as we have with our previous budget proposals, we've, we really spend time taking a look at our expenses and, um, track the costs so that we can come up with a, a budget that is both workable for us and we believe workable for, uh, the town. Each of our proposals has been a little bit less than the year before. And, um, what we gave you as a comparison, which Bob has too, um, we talked to him about this a little earlier today, um, is the, uh, and it's, I wrote on it in red, so you don't confuse it with the one that you got. 'Cause you, you have to look at your operating, what we're operating under now and what our proposal was. So what we requested is actually a total amount that's a little bit less than the amount that we have to work with this year. And in working through, um, Tim's a spreadsheet meister. He's just really good at putting spreadsheets together. We keep them going to track our expenses. So we, we find that we are able to put in an increase in our salaries while not raising our bottom line, which we feel is important. Um, historically, it's been how many years?
Well, over, over an eight-year period, um, the registrar's position has had a, had a total increase of twelve percent over eight years. So we've been trying to catch up.
I'm a little confused. So the budget amounts that the Controller's Office gave us is those?
Yes.
And yours are?
So, so what we have to look at-
That was the original request.
Yes, that's our, yes, how we kind of put it together, but-
What I did was I took that difference because I tie into the budget-
Yeah.
That they currently, or the salary they currently earn, which is the fifteen-five, which was voted on last year by the Board of Finance before the elections, and that difference from the seventeen is in wage contingency, the wage of job spends.
So you would have to dis-
So when you go through the deliberations, you can increase that amount and then we can move it over later. But to tie in, we have to go with these numbers.
Yeah, you have to be able to compare your apples to apples. If, if it was the amount that we had, but the one that I wrote on and read, then you wouldn't be able to, to do that. So that salary part, you have to discuss, it's not gonna be discussed tonight.
Right.
It's something that you'll discuss at a, at another time, but we wanted to show in comparison that, um, having that increase for not just, uh, Tim and myself, but for our deputies, um, that we can do that with our, also our expenses and still have a slightly, you know- and still have a slightly, you know, small decrease in what our actual operating is right now. A couple of things, we did take out of the original budget that kind of had been there for a while. We had a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar amount for tech support for the tabulators of voting machines. We found that it wasn't totally necessary, it was something that we were kind of carrying for a bit, because we thought we were gonna need, but we're finding that the twenty-four-hundred for tabulator maintenance, that's a yearly expense, is pretty much covering any issues that we have. Tabulators are going on, over ten years old, eleven, maybe twelve soon. So, being electronic devices, we take very good care of them when we move them around, et cetera. We don't have big issues with them, but some things, like the main power supplies are starting to go, and they're having to be replaced. The twenty-four-hundred that we pay for our tabulators creates an agreement with LHS, the vendor for the tabulators, and that covers pretty much everything, whether it's during the annual maintenance or another time. If we find some of the tabulators aren't working, they'll send a guy over, if we make an appointment, they'll fix them. But we haven't had to pay for any parts, they cover the parts, which is hopefully a good thing that will continue for a while.
Yeah, so over, you know, this is the fourth year we've come in a row with a budget that is asking less than what was approved for the current year, so at this point, comparing our 2019 request to the registrar voter's budget for fiscal year 2015, it's a ten percent reduction. So, we're running on ten percent less money than we were four and five years ago.
Some of the amounts, like mostly the office expenses, are generated through what we know we have to do as part of our regular day-to-day work in the office. The election expenses, we put together, not just the tabulator maintenance, but everything else, we put together in looking at, we have to do an election every year, most years we do a primary, some municipal years we don't, but pretty much every state and federal year, which are the even number of years, we have to have a primary. We have our budget referendum, so those are the three that we generally budget for. And then, there's a little extra in there, so that if we have one more referendum, kind of generally can cover that. After that, I think it was twenty-fifteen budget year, twenty-fourteen budget year, we went over just because we had like five, six referendums, and a special election. So, I mean, what if, so by state law, we are required to do certain things, by charter, we're required to do certain things. So, if we don't have enough money in our budget to run another referendum, we can't say, oops, sorry, you can't have a referendum, we do have to have a referendum. We're also looking at reducing some of the office expense in our annual canvas, which is going on now, and that's something that's required by statute, we have to canvas the voting list. That's kind of the general way it's put, how you do that is up to each registrar and each, or set of registrars in each municipality. We're finding ways to keep our voter list a little cleaner, so that we don't have to contact as many people to find out, do you really still live here?
Yeah, we're also doing morbid in-house, so it used to be that our predecessors hired an outside service to do the canvas. We're handling it in-house by doing our own mail merges and stuffing our own envelopes. After the presidential election, the presidential election, we had eighty percent turnout. So, for the canvas, we just had to look at the twenty percent of the voters who did not vote, which is still about twenty-four hundred people, but again, if someone didn't vote in 2016 in the presidential election, it was likely that they had moved out of town and we didn't know it. We can track very easily people who move out of town if they're a homeowner, and they sell their house and they leave. It's a lot harder with the renters, and we were just talking about the fifteen hundred renters.
Yeah.
So, they come and go, and they're not calling us up saying, oh, by the way, I'm moving to Danbury, so...
We do get some indication through DMV when people go and deal with their, either license or registration. Start, a year and a half ago, it started that with DMV being linked into our statewide registration system. And when you go do your license, if you've done it recently, or registration, they ask you if you want to register to vote. Hopefully, you know that you registered to vote, and you can say, thanks, but no thanks. But if people don't remember, or if the DMV doesn't quite get it right, we get that electronically now. So, that's been an increase in our time, office time. So, we're, this time of year, when we're not looking at having an election anytime soon, we may have gotten a couple of registrations in the mail here and there, we get ten or more a week through DMV. And we have to process them, some of them are people, they say they're new voters, now they've been here for a while. But we still have to look at it, process it, make sure their information is up to date, some are new. So, our voter list has grown, we're up, when we started four years ago, or, yeah, 2015, we were, we're up about eight-hundred-and-fifty or so voters from then. Part of that, I think, is everything coming in through DMV. Eventually, it's gonna be automatic, once you go to DMV, you're gonna become a voter, you have to opt out somehow, they'll figure that out.
Yeah, right now, we're at about twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty voters. At the time of the presidential election, we were up to about twelve-thousand-four-hundred. So, it's showing a reduction, that's basically from our efforts going out and following up and finding people who aren't living here anymore, or possibly not living. And, and then we, and this is happening at the same time that new voters are coming to town, so that's a net, net number difference of about two hundred.
So, it goes up a little, it goes down a little, it goes up a little, pretty much every day. One other change that we had, when we first started, the state had mandated that we become certified. And that was something that's been in the works for years and years and years, finally, they passed some legislation requiring us to attend a number of courses and then take a test, which is fine, you know, we were new, we were like, yay, other registrars would kind of be in, they didn't want to do it. We were given two years to, from the time of taking office, to complete the course, we finished it in less than a year, except for the last course, which wasn't offered until last January. So, we took it then, and then we were gonna take the test when it was first offered last April, but we couldn't because it was in the middle of the budget referendum. So, we took it in May and passed, so we're now certified registrars, yay.
Yeah, passed with an A-plus, each.
Each, so in the, in the expenses for, we had to pay tuition, this town, the municipality, had to pay tuition for that. So, we had to add that in, now, we're not required to do those courses, so we took it back out. The ongoing training, however, we do have to do eight hours a year of some kind of continuing education, yet that's not been specified yet, so we kind of put a little bit in there to try to see if we could cover, if it's a possible tuition sort of thing.
And we also don't know whether these continuing ed courses are going to be offered through UConn, like the certification class, or will they allow it to happen through the, through the Registrar Voters Association's annual conferences?
So, we took some out of there, we left a little bit in, so I think...
So, I'm familiar, the delta, the negative delta is in that election expense, the four thousand dollars, more or less.
Yeah, there's four thousand there.
Is that a one-time expense savings, or is that something that will be recurring?
We expect it to be ongoing, because we reduce that based on historic expenditures. We, so there's the seven-fifty on the tech support, four thousand dollar reduction in election supplies, and another two thousand dollars in, in office expense, mainly for the canvas work that we're doing in-house. And then, part of our original request was for, well, that was a net of almost seven thousand dollar reduction, we were looking for four thousand dollars to be added to the salary line for the two registrars and the two, well, split between four people.
Not equally, I get more than that.
That's right.
And again, the one that I wrote on and read is just, that was our request, so you can give a comparison, so you've gotta use your other one to compare to, so your numbers all line up and add up.
Any questions on the Board of Finance? Let's take a ten-minute break, and then be ready to go at eight forty.
There's one extra.
...
Okay, is it recording?
Yes.
Okay, Board of Selectmen is back in session.
As is the Board of Finance.
And next up is Department 360 Police Department. I welcome the Chair of the Board, Mr. Duff, Chief Finch, and Captain Pugna.
Thank you, Mrs. Selectman. Ladies, gentlemen, and new members of the Board, my name is Michael Duff, Chief Finch, Captain Pugna, and with us is another Commissioner, Kevin Cleary.
There he is.
In our meetings, we've had several concerning this budget, and of course, we direct the Chief, who has a good financial background, to come up with the details, and he will give the presentation to you all as to our position in the financial sense, and I would beg of you to give him a few moments after the presentation for a specific topic that he will address and not take too much of your time. Chief Finch, if you would please.
Thank you. At the request of Ms. Wendy, I'll try to move very quick through the budget. If you have a question, stop me, and at the end, I have some literature I want to give you which will prompt some conversation, I think. So the budget starts out with my salary and the captain's salary, that's set by the first selectman. The next area is 104 Dispatchers and Clerical, that covers salaries for dispatchers, records supervisor, records clerk, secretary, canine control, animal control person, and a part-time animal control person, who we have there occasionally for weekends when the animal control person is five to, he's Monday through Friday, somebody has to be there to feed and clean the animals, and that's what that's for. 106 is negotiated salaries, those are salaries for thirty-five sworn police officers. I also have a quest there for two new officers, at sixty thousand dollars each. That conversation, I'm sure that will generate some conversation, and I'd like to hold that to the end where I have some handouts, and I'd like to address that specifically. The next page is one oh, our next page at least, is 107 Overtime. We historically spend somewheres from two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to three-hundred-thousand dollars a year in overtime. Eighty thousand dollars of that, approximately eighty thousand alone, goes just to staff at the dispatch center. We dispatch for fire and emergency services, ambulances, as well as the police department. 108 is Special Police, we still have two special police officers left, it's a dying organization. Not that they're dying, actually, they're just had enough and they retire and move on, we only have two that are left.
What is, what is special?
Pardon?
What is that?
What is it? Years ago, the police department used to have auxiliaries that they could call on to do, they called them auxiliaries and specials, and they could come out and actually assist in police duties. Some twenty years ago, the academy, the police academy in Connecticut passed, legislature passed the laws, they said, "You can't do that anymore. You're gonna have somebody out there doing police work that need to be officially trained by the academy," which means they have to attend the academy. So there's not too many volunteers anymore that are gonna attend the academy on their own time to become certified, and then every year, go through the training to maintain that certification. Most departments have next, very few are next to no specials anymore. They might have auxiliaries, but they have no police power, an auxiliary has no police power, a special has full police power, and they can go out and enforce the law.
So do they mostly do, like, traffic control, special duty?
Well, in past, they've actually assisted in manning a police car and going out onto the street, but the job has become so complicated by state mandates, that that really isn't happening anymore.
Okay.
So they go out and they assist with the traffic, you'll see them at the traffic duty out there on Saturday and Sunday on Greenwood Avenue, you'll see them in the parade, they help us, or sometimes there's other special duties, or every once in a while, we'll have one of them come out and ride double with a police officer. It's extremely seldom anymore. That figure's been flat for a couple of years now, we haven't increased it because we used to have four just four or five years ago, and now we only have two, so the number's gone down over the past four years, and it's been kind of flat the last two or three. Longevity, that's a contractual issue, the contract with the police department and the police officers' union requires certain contractual payments for longevity. Same thing with holiday pay, contractual, police officers, the majority of them that work a four-to schedule, they don't have the opportunity to take a holiday off, so at the end of the year, the town just pays them for thirteen holidays. 111 Educational Incentive, another contractual issue. We have five officers that have master's degrees, we have seventeen officers that have bachelor's degree, no, no, excuse me, we have five that have associate's degrees, seventeen that have bachelor's, and five that have master's degree. Contractually, there's an agreement to pay them a certain stipend for that degree. That's what that figure is.
Is that annual?
This year, it went up because we hired, pardon?
I just asked if that was annually.
Yes, each year. It went up this year because we, the last four or five, in the last two years, we've hired a lot of people, a lot of people have left and gone on, retired and left, and the people we've been hiring all have bachelor's degrees. The first year of their hire, they don't get that, the second year, they do. So we have three new people coming on this second fiscal year that will be eligible for that, and that's why that went up.
Is a degree a requirement of the job now?
I'm sorry?
Is a degree, a college degree of some kind, a requirement of the job now?
No, it isn't. But you have many towns that won't hire you unless you have one, and when we interview people, those people with degrees almost always do better. Not only on the written test, they score higher, but they also seem to rise up on the interviews as well. And more and more of them are going to school and getting degrees and applying to become police officers.
So of the ones who left, were they receiving this additional benefit?
Some of them didn't have degrees, the ones that left. I think we've only got a small handful of people on the department anymore that don't have degrees. West Hartford is one department, won't hire you without a degree. Training overtime, this is overtime just for training, we're required to give officers sixty hours minimum every three years. It lists some of the training as an example of what we have to go through, firearms training every year, domestic violence training, medical training, taser training, rifle training. It adds up quick, and this number is overtime, so it's directly connected to any salary figure. 201 is office expenses, there's no increase there, somewhat self-explanatory. 206 Equipment and Supplies, there is no increase there, we've left those areas flat.
Chief, I'm sorry, it's not a big number, I'm just curious, under 201, Item 4, Building and Furniture, replacement of old worn hallway and room rugs, et cetera, is it just kind of a constant project? Is that why it goes from one year to the next?
Yes, yeah, certain areas get replaced this year, and a few years later, certain areas, and the rugs, I have cops coming and going, you know, it's necessary to point out sometimes that we're a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-seven-hour day, when the weather is bad, whatever it is, we have cops and coming and going, and the rugs get dirty, the floors get dirty, these guys are wearing combat boots because they're out in the road, they're pulling, carrying all this mud and dirt, and some of the rugs get destroyed rather quickly.
But with the new building, would that, when would the new building be occupiable?
We're told by July, we would hope by August, September.
I think the project completion date is estimated at July fifteenth.
So is there furniture and fixtures built into the new project, so not the sixteen-hundred dollars is gonna make or break this?
I would foresee that more of going towards some stuff that got left out.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some stuff that's just not, that's gonna fall through the cracks.
Will this cover everything for the new building? I don't know, I don't know.
No, more like it wouldn't be needed because you have the new building.
No, there's always something to fix and replace, it's not a lot of money exactly, but there's something there, so we can fix and replace it ourselves, and I don't have to go through some processing issue here and wait a month or two to get something done. 207 is Communications, this is dedicated to expenses for the dispatch system, vehicles, radios, the handheld radios, portable radios. We did replace all of that some, seven or eight years ago, or how long? And now they're starting to get old, it cost, that one handheld portable radio cost two grand. So every time we have to replace one of those, it's rather expensive. Canine unit, we have one police dog, that figure has not gone up. Bicycle unit, that figure has not gone up. Armory operations, that figure has not gone up. That figure did go up in armory a few years ago because of the Iraq and Afghanistan issues, there was a lot of demand for bullets, believe it or not, and it took us a long time to order, order bullets. Every, once again, every year, we have to have so many bullets to go and train and qualify with them.
What's the difference between the 214 account, the canine unit, and the canine control and the office expenses?
The canine unit is a police dog. The animal control is...
I got you. There's roaming, barking dogs, lost dogs.
No, it's not on dogs, sure. 301 Training and Education, this is, pays for books, pays for tuition, and some recruiting. The academy used to be free, it's not anymore, they charge us two thousand dollars a person. The courses that they give, which are numerous, not in-house people in the academy, but numerous, if they're having a recertification course in one area, police officers from all over the state can go to that course, one-day course maybe, could be half a day course, could be two-day course. They used to all be free, not anymore, they're charging for them now.
So Chief, and you've explained this before, and it kind of went in one ear and out the other, right, that 301 is the academy, and 111 is at the private university, is that how, a private school?
Oh, 111 is the reimbursement for guys wanting to go to college, they'll go wherever they want.
That's a contractual requirement.
Yeah.
If they have a bachelor's degree, we give them a contractual stipend of, I think now it's two thousand dollars.
And the training and education is at the academy?
Pardon?
The training, the account 301?
301, well, it's not just the academy, if we have to send somewhere, someone to some other training, where we might have to even send them overnight, or there might be tuition, some of the colleges offer courses in police training. You have Dr., you all heard of Dr. Henry Lee?
Yep.
Down in West, down in New Haven area, he offers courses all the time. We don't send too many to him because he's enormously expensive, but it's that type of thing we send people to as well. Professional Service, serves to provide annual physical exams, hepatitis, rabies shots, some of these are required by law that the officers be inoculated for, random drug testing, psychological lie detector exams, and the OSHA masks. That was a new one we had to put in there last year, it cost us seventy-two hundred dollars to have our officers tested for masks.
What does that mean?
Fitted.
Oh, fitted?
They have to go to a doctor, he asks them the three or four questions, and they take a little dust mask, there's one of the masters too, with a little dust mask that you buy in Home Depot, go like this, how's that feel, does it fit? I kid you not.
And you're required to do that by OSHA?
By OSHA.
And the two hundred dollars per? Yes, yes.
308 Clothing Allowance, this is contractual as well, with the exception of maybe one or two thousand dollars. It costs us about thirty-five hundred to equip one new officer. It's probably about fifteen hundred dollars just in academy clothes that the academy demands that we give them and issue them.
The dispatchers clothes, is that a contract?
Yes, yes, dispatchers is contractual as well. The only stuff that's not contractual there is damage and loss. We're required to replace damaged and lost equipment that can't be simply cleaned, or most of it can't be repaired. You have an officer come in with a lot of blood splatter on his clothes, some of it can be dry cleaned, but he's a little adverse to having it dry cleaned, depending on the extent of it. Animal control, I don't believe is contractual, that's on a, to need basis, I think. Color garden, emergency services use is on a need basis, but the vast majority of it, with the exception of maybe twenty-five hundred dollars.
I was just thinking, dispatchers are in the office all the time, they're not out in the general public, that, you know, but we're providing them the uniform?
Yes. Well, it's minimal, very small, all they have is a polo shirt and a sweater or something of that nature. And I think, frankly, it's important, if they represent the police department, you have the public coming in, that's the first person they see, the public sees. If we didn't provide them with some guidance or some direction as to what they would wear, I don't think you would be happy.
Chief, I'm just trying to make sure I understand how all the pieces fit together. There's new hires, parenthetical two, I'm assuming that corresponds to the two that you're gonna talk to us about at the end of the presentation?
No, that's new hires in general, we expect to replace two people in this calendar year, in this fiscal year, we anticipate we're gonna lose two people.
And is that recurring, is that why there's a balance in the two thousand seventeen, excuse me, yeah, two thousand seventeen, eighteen column as well?
I'm not sure I know what your question is.
If it's new hires, I guess I would have expected only the fifty-five hundred in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen column. I would have expected to see nothing in the twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen column, because the new hires right here.
We can't always anticipate what the new hires are going to be.
If you're replacing people...
I don't have the column that you're looking at, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's down there?
That's the...
Yeah. Yeah, some years, we can't forecast that very well, because we don't know when people are leaving, but I still don't...
Yeah, 308.
308.
308 Clothing Allowance, last year, it showed thirty-five hundred, this year, fifty-five hundred, and again, it's...
You are anticipating attrition of two individuals this year?
Yes, it's coming, we're anticipating, we have, we know that Dickerson's planning to leave, and so is McKenzie, they've told us. So we put that figure in there, the year before, I only put in thirty-five hundred because I only thought that one was gonna leave.
So does it have to do with the two new officers that you're...
No, there's no correlation between that figure and the two I'm asking for.
Got it, thank you.
So if you hire someone the same size as those who are leaving, it'd be all sad, right? Right? But who's the one that's...
Forget the college degree.
Technically, if I get those two officers, yes, I'm gonna need thirty-five hundred dollars each for them too, but that's, I could work that out. I could work through that. 313 Contracted Services, this is always a big one. There's not a lot of change here, it did go up like four thousand dollars. Most of these things are absolutely necessary for our operation, most of the prices are out of our control, we contract with these individuals to provide the service, and that's what the figure comes out to be.
It's not a...
The only new one here is the evidence software maintenance.
I was gonna say, it's not a big number overall, but there's a, the Comcast internet service, kind of sticks out.
Well, we've been told, we've been told we've been getting Comcast internet service for a number of years now at the residential rate. a number of years now at the residential rate. They've made it clear that when we go into a new building, it'll be at the business rate where it's supposed to be. So, yes, that went up.
We'll see about that.
I think so. I think we need a higher speed for the new building because there's a lot more access points than we have now.
Yeah, you've got to, you've got to write in. Just out of curiosity, the server and switches for the Cisco replacement, in the building, you, you're not taking any of that equipment with you?
Oh, yes, I am. The servers and stuff, we would be absolutely...
That's going to go off? That's not in the building?
Yeah.
There's some new switches, if that's what you're confused about.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, there's new switches that have to be put in and things, but some of the basic structure is still good. Although it's somewhat difficult to forecast exactly what's going to happen when you shut down dispatch and have to move it to a new building, you know. Last page, capital. We're asking for four vehicles again this year?
How many did you get last year? I'm sorry, or the current budget that we're in?
How many did we get this year?
Four.
Four.
These are all, no longer sedans, right? You're just going to...
Yes.
Explorer?
Explorers, yes. Two vehicle changeover and equipment. It costs a couple thousand dollars just to change the equipment from one car to another. The expenses are actually more than that. We rely on trade-in value from some of the old cars to help us.
Let's talk about that a little bit, because it's always a debate about these trade-in values. Do we get, do you have an advanced number as far as your trade-in values for the vehicles that you're getting rid of? Because, you know, I want to say this. We had a situation here in town, we had vehicles laying around, and they said it was worth nothing until we put it up for auction. Come to find out, we missed, it was up by $27,000.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
We don't get $27,000 for anything. I don't, what kind of, what kind of vehicle are you talking about?
You know, there's a lot of police guards out there, okay, they're identified by that tag in the bag, that are taxis.
And?
And, you know, the question is, maybe we should explore this idea as far as putting it up for sale directly.
Using the auction site?
Yeah.
Hold up, the last time, you got $8,800 for the car?
The last, yeah, one of the, the values depend on what car you're trading in. And it, we really go out and we sell, you know, shop that, so to speak, and use it against the competitors.
You're buying state due, right?
Yeah, so the cars we're buying on state bid, but you could buy from other dealers as long as they follow the state bid price. So you could kind of leverage the trade-in values with each other. So we're getting, we're getting the optimum trade-in value for these cars. But the old Crown Vics, the rear-wheel-drive sedans, no one wants them anymore. We don't have anymore, but for example, the trade-in value of that is really, really low. But some of these cars now are SUVs, all-wheel-drive, they're beat up, but they still have a little bit of a value, so. It, it's really hard to estimate it because the time we, gets approved, the time we have to buy the cars, we have to figure out what cars were, there's five cars we probably need to replace right now. Obviously, we're only going to hopefully get four. So when the time comes, we get the money, everything approved, we get to really figure out which four are we actually going to physically turn in. Something might go wrong with one of them before we turn it in, transmission might blow, or, you know, things like, little things like that, so it fluctuates.
But you know, like I said, we, we, we have vehicles which were not even viable, but I was surprised that not many got one.
Yeah. Now, yeah, we, I will can see what other places are getting for trade-in value of these vehicles as well, sorry.
The other question I had is, well, two questions. One is, what's the, can you estimate the annual revenue that you get from special assignments?
Eighty to 100?
Hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty, eighty to 120. I don't know what it is right now.
Do you know what that is, Bob, my friend?
No.
This is one of the reasons why we kept an extra couple of cars, kept old ones, because we rent them out to the contractors on the street at $22 an hour, and we have generated some 80 to 120,000 dollars a year doing that. And that's why in the past, Finance Board has been a little receptive to giving us a fourth vehicle.
Bob, can you get that number?
It's worked one or two years.
I know for 2016, it was 120. I don't know what 17 was, I think right around 100, if not more. But to find out for sure.
So the figures you have here for four vehicles, is that net of trade-in? There's a trade-in?
No, that's the cost.
That's the full cost?
Yeah.
Okay, so the trade-in would offset some of that?
It usually goes towards the vehicle changeover for the most part.
Right, okay.
If it wasn't for the trade-in, that $17,000 figure would probably have to be more.
Yeah, okay.
Now, on, on these vehicles, I know on the Crown Vics, you used to put special seats in the back. Are you doing the same thing with these SUVs?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a seat that goes over the actual physical seat in the Explorers. So when you take it out, there's actually this...
And the cage in the back, right?
Yeah, the cage, yeah.
To answer the vehicle revenue, we budget $400,000. Through the seven months of this year so far, we're at 50,000. Obviously, it's a slower time for...
Yeah, the spring will pick it up, yeah.
So, again, just because I'm new here, what criteria do you guys use to decide it's time to take a car off the street, like we need a new car?
Usually it's not strictly by mileage, but just the example, the few that we're looking at to replace now are two 2014 Explorers that are going to have over, close to 100,000 miles.
You have to, you have to keep in mind that those are miles. That doesn't necessarily reflect the hours on the engine. With police officers out there, I mean, especially on the midnight shift, they could be running all night long, but not putting on that many miles. They'll drive around, sit here for a half hour, drive around, sit here for a half hour. So the mile, the hours on the engine are considerably more than what's reflected by the miles.
But, I mean, that's your benchmark. When you get to 100,000, you know how...
Five, six years on patrol, you know, depending, like, the cars look to trade in 2009 and 2012, to 2014s, to give you an idea. They all will have about 100,000 miles on by the time we put a trade in then.
Thank you.
Capital equipment number three is vehicle computers. We have computers in all the patrol cars. You know, you know how it works with computers and technology. We can't wait till it breaks to replace it, so we try to cycle out three out of a dozen or so cars. How many cars do we have with computers?
I think we're 16, including the animal control though.
Yeah. So we try to plan for that in advance. That cycling thought is the same as it is with cars. We don't want to keep a car that's too old and have it fail on us. That will become very clear when we get down to defibrillators. Car cameras, we have cameras in the cars now. We still need two more. We have one car that still needs a new light bar. Computerization, hardware, replacement and upgrades, this is for, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Do we have, for the four vehicles that you're requesting, will, will they have the computers and the camera, or would that be additional that are required? Say we gave you four cars again, are they going to have...
Yes, because we would be trading in, we'd be swapping the...
So you just take, so this is just the...
These are just to cycle out the old ones that are, that old computers that are probably six, seven years old already. Computerization, this is for some minor, I mean, 8, 8,500 doesn't go for when you have to buy new hardware, be it for a car, or, well, this isn't really about cars, this is about servers. We have to buy new hardware for the servers, or new switches, or new things like that. Radar unit. We, we're still operating with some very old radar units, that's for one radar unit. Taser supplies, we bought last year, so we don't need any this year. Defibrillators, another example of items we want to rotate on a regular basis. I don't want the officers going out there with a defibrillator that's six, seven years old. Wait for it to fail when they need it most. We need to rotate some of these items out before they fail. Again, keeping in mind, we're, we operate every day of the year. Defibrillators, this equipment is going in and out, and in and out of operation every day of the year. Are there any questions on any of these items?
I have a question on three thirteen, if I can take you back from the case. There's a line item called accreditation. What is that?
Accreditation. That's CLEA. That's the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation. It's a organization that accredits law enforcement agencies throughout the world, but dominantly within the United States. They come to your department, they set standards, they have 400 and something standards. They'll come to your department, and they will look, make sure that you have policies in place and training on these standards. So the first challenge for a department looking to accreditate is to find out what these standards are and put them into place. Takes three years to do that normally. Normally it takes three years to identify these policies, put them in place, and start training people to make sure they understand these policies. We've been accredited now for several years by this organization, as well as the state of Connecticut. If you can reach CLEA accreditation, you've already surpassed what accreditation program the state provides. CLEA, CLEA is an organization that, that, again, is nationwide, but when they send out inspectors to inspect us, they're not my friends. There are the police officers, people that I can't bullshit, if you'll excuse the expression. They know what to look for, and they're not my friends. If they don't like something, they'll fail me, as compared to other accreditation agencies that my friends work at. So the ones my friends work at are free. CLEA is not. CLEA charges you about $5,000, based on the size of your department. They charge you about $5,000 a year. Once, once within that three-year period, even after you're accredited, once within that three-year period, they're going to come out here, they're going to spend three days, and they're going to take over the police department, look at anything and everything they want. If they don't like it, they're going to fail you. So it's a pretty legitimate accreditation organization.
And that's an annual process?
Yes, yes. It's more than an annual process, it's an everyday process.
Well, met the inspection...
Now they've gotten good enough that they, they've put in, they've put in software out there, and they can software into our system and, and look for answers and emails, and they get to be a pain sometimes, frankly. And that's the annual fee from them, that's what that is.
Okay.
Chief, and you already addressed it, but line 107 for overtime. Now, last year, I recall that there was an issue because the overtime for dispatchers was, was very high, and you, so didn't you get another dispatcher, or two more dispatchers?
No, that was two years ago, though.
Two years ago. So why, what is this jump in overtime?
What, what is your question?
The jump in overtime?
Line 107, last year was 195, and the request is 278.
Well, that's what, that's what I was given. I don't think that's what I requested.
What's that requested?
Seventy-one of them. Next year, we require seventy-one.
Yeah.
The right column is about to...
And they, and they cut it down.
She wanted to buy, but I think we're just trying to budget realistically, right?
The overtime has been somewhat fluid. I mean, I've always tried to request what I thought I was going to need, and there's many, many years where I got next to nothing, because the controller always knew that there'd be enough excess in my budget to cover. There's years where I told this board I needed 200,000, and they gave me 20.
Right.
And that was because...
But you had excess in your salary.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. That's because they knew there was excess in the salary, and they'd be able to cover it. So it's been somewhat fluid in what I asked for, but when we went to the nine dispatchers, and over the last year, we've been short people, there's people, we lost a lot of people over the past three or four years, starting with Jim Wright and the whole list of them, with Kennedy and Breckenthal, and Brian Diana, and a whole list of people, as well as dispatchers. We lost a few. And we also increased the size of the dispatch people from eight to nine.
Right, I know, because there was an overtime issue. That was what you said, that there...
Yeah, and every, and every, every dispatcher that takes a day off, we have to recover it.
That's an...
A time and a half. Every dispatcher that takes a sick day, a vacation day, a holiday off, a death in the family, we have to cover that opening with another dispatcher a time and a half. Sometimes the civilian dispatchers don't want to work it, so we have to cover that with a police officer, which is more than a civilian dispatcher.
Right, that's why you got more dispatchers. Am I, am I crazy? Because I thought...
No, what you're getting confused with is, they, we used to have nine dispatchers.
Right.
Several years ago, they cut a dispatcher. They took the manpower off the midnight shift, so we were running with only one dispatcher on the midnight shift sometimes.
We went up to...
We really have to have two, because we do EMD, we dispatch fire, police, and ambulance.
We're an emergency medical dispatch, and if it wasn't for that, we could probably survive with one dispatcher and dispatch, but if we have to dispatch for emergency medical aid, and ambulance, and fire, you really need to have two in there. As has been well pointed out by them, they can't even get up to go to the bathroom if there's not somebody to cover them.
So that, that means you back up to nine?
Yes.
You went from nine to eight, now you're back up to nine in order to cover that nighttime shift.
And staffing the two people around the clock too. We were not staffing the two people at midnight sometimes.
But that's your current level?
Yes.
And so I think, what's, what's the anticipation for, I guess, additional overtime?
That's kind of my question too. Last year it was 195, and it's just a jump.
You got to remember that item on the right hand side is the adjusted number.
Okay.
After the Board of Finance came up with their budget for the police department.
Okay.
So it might have been back 250,000, and you brought it down, just got to get that back.
Yeah.
So it's come back.
Right, so the actual request.
That's all it was.
And that's one of those kind of things that if you don't need it, you don't spend, right?
Correct. But it'll get, with dispatch, it'll get spent, because every dispatcher that takes a day off, we have to hire somebody...
Can you plan that into your overall advantage? I mean, that's, that happens everywhere, where people have time off, or vacation, or whatever. It has to come in out of your overall, in your, your full-time equivalent planning.
No, it does cover it in overtime.
Should it come out of, of a more standard kind of a nine dispatch?
Nine dispatches equal X amount of dollars.
Yeah, maybe being, you know, I think what Robert is saying is, if, if we know, and again, you guys know this better, that we do this, I think it's just us trying to understand how it, how you all think about it, but if we're incurring 278 of overtime, it looks like that's almost 33% of the salary base, so then that kind of suggests maybe you need three more dispatchers.
Although, here's the problem, I have to try to explain it. So there's nine dispatchers, they work a four-two schedule.
And remind, we have a four-two schedule.
Four days on, two days off. There's three in each shift, so there's overlap, so there's always scheduled two. And dispatch, as soon as one person takes any time off, it creates overtime no matter what.
We think about nine dispatchers, and if it gets 10 days off, that's 90 days off that we know in advance we have to fill with overtime.
And I guess the, maybe going to Robert's question, why not hire 10, knowing that you will cycle in this 10th dispatcher?
Because we don't, we don't know where we will cycle in that 10, because we don't know when you're going to take a day off. We don't know when you're going to take a vacation, when you're going to take a sick...
Well, it still should help, right? I mean, if you had a 10th dispatcher, which is cheaper.
But you're cheaper than a 10th police officer, right?
What, what are you suggesting?
Well, you know, the thing is, that what we're looking for is a uniformity. You know, you, you can plan, you have, whether you have nine or 10 dispatchers, over a year's time, you automatically say, okay, I don't, what does he get, four weeks off a year?
Did you, I, I recall Laura Visil sitting here telling you how she couldn't find anybody to hire. Trying to find part-time, this is a highly intense position of training, of training and experience, you just can't, the dispatcher needs to work there on a regular basis, you just... The dispatcher needs to work here on a regular basis, you just can't hire them to come in part-time.
Here's the question, how many dispatchers do you have, nine?
Nine.
Nine. If you hired ten and just fed them in the rotation, would all ten people still have full-time hours?
I, I don't know, I'd have to look at what kind of schedule we could set up, I.
What would you do with a third dispatcher? Right now, we only have two dispatchations.
I know, well.
Would it alleviate some of the overtime costs if you had a tenth dispatcher?
Would it relieve him?
You could technically have.
Some of.
Your regular dispatcher will take the same day off.
If you had a tenth dispatcher who could maintain their certification and their training, that you could fit in whenever it was convenient, well, of course it would, but.
I mean, it would make sense to have, to pay a dispatcher versus paying a police officer, you said, in dispatch.
Well, the police officer.
That's very rare.
Let me, let me, let me add to that. You know, when you call up your doctor office with a problem, who answers the phone?
The receptionist.
The receptionist that doesn't know anything about medicine. Wouldn't it be nice if a nurse answered the phone and could give you an answer?
Well, yeah, but that's not how it works.
Well, there's better than fifty, sixty percent of your police departments that have police officers in dispatch for that very reason.
Really?
Yes.
Quick question.
Yes.
Maybe we can answer it this way. How much, how many hours did we have using police officers as a dispatcher?
How much of the time is replaced by police officers?
Yeah, how many hours?
Oh, man.
Twenty percent maybe?
It's not that much.
Twenty percent maybe?
It's only when none of the dispatchers want it, which a lot of them want the overtime, you know. There's only, what, four police officers left that can even work the dispatcher overtime? So there's not many that can even work it, they have to go through additional training to be able to answer nine-one-one and stuff. It's not like any police officer could just sit at the desk.
Right, I understand that.
So, but to make a case for any overtime, isn't that what comprises most of your overtime?
I wouldn't say most of it.
Okay, how much, what percentage of dispatch is, is overtime for officers filling in for dispatchers?
Well, as I just said, it might be twenty percent, I don't know.
Okay, and what's the other overtime? What's the line share of, of other overtime?
Are you talking about overtime overall for dispatch?
I'm talking about one oh seven, line one oh seven.
No, but I mean, are you talking about the overall cost of dispatching overtime? Dispatchers can work overtime too.
Okay, yeah.
So I think that Chief has it in here as eighty thousand dollars of the two seventy-eight is estimated what dispatcher overtime is. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah.
And that's just for taking a day off or sick time?
Correct.
Because there is someone scheduled.
For whatever reason they don't show up to work, for whatever reason they're not there, a position has to be filled. We need to have two bodies there.
So I guess my question is, what is the actual cost loaded of a dispatcher? Is it more than eighty thousand dollars?
It's about seventy-five thousand.
So we saved five thousand dollars by hiring an additional full-time?
I don't think you would though, because you never know, you can't make that tenth person work multiple different schedules. They have to bid by contract, which is bid by seniority. So that tenth dispatcher can end up on day shift. So someone from evenings or midnight shift called out sick, it's still overtime no matter what.
If the opening's created by vacation, we, you would think we would have some ability to plan for that. But if that opening's created by a sick time and you're the tenth dispatcher and you haven't worked for three weeks and now we call you up because at the last minute someone called in sick and we need you midnight, so are you gonna be able to go? Who knows?
And that's, that's probably the key element to putting this puzzle together. Because if it's a planned, um, you know, vacation or whatever, you should be able to have additional resources to fill that in. I, i.e. a tenth person. If it's unplanned accidents, death to the family, elders, whatever, then you're absolutely right, you have to use other resources. But, you know, and that's what we're trying to get at here.
But it's, it's a position that's highly challenging, I, I can't afford to have this.
Your overtime situation here, to see if there's a less expensive way that can fill it and that will be more efficient for you.
By all means, if we can put a better way, huh, who am I to refuse it?
If we hire a dispatcher for whatever the going rate for dispatcher is, right, there is still going to be significant overtime for those people who, even that person will be calling in sick and we'll be paying him overtime or her.
And, and no one here is suggesting that we have a better plan for you. You guys know your situation, we're just asking the questions to see how you've thought this through, that's, that's the.
It's a highly technical position, you need people that are currently sharp in it, not somebody that just shows up every other week to work an eight-hour shift.
And overtime is time and a half?
Yes. Now eighty thousand's a high number, that's the high side. Commonly, we would spend less than that for dispatch. We might only spend forty or fifty thousand dollars, but it could go as high as eighty. I don't know how many days they're gonna call out sick. Once again, I have nine dispatchers that get at least ten days vacation, that's ninety days alone. They also get ten days sick time every year and they'll use fifty percent of that, so that's another forty or fifty days. So now we're talking a hundred and something days that I have to replace them.
So, and if the difference really only is five thousand dollars, it is not worth upsetting the apple cart, right? To make, to make that kind of change.
It is, it, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, two fifty-seven, that's the base salary for the nine dispatchers?
No matter salary, yes.
Yeah.
Four fifty-two.
I think if you were to put a tenth dispatcher on for argument's sake, and I'm just estimating, I don't really tell you numbers, that eighty thousand might go down to sixty thousand.
Yeah, that's the, the percentage suggests you guys are cutting it because as it is.
They're, they're gonna have to bid a schedule, so you can't make them work different schedules, like this week you work evenings, next week you work midnights, you can't make people do that by contract.
Well, that's been helpful, this was, for me, it was all educational, so not challenging, just trying to understand how office.
It is, it is a complex, it is the most, it's the heartbeat of the, of the, of the police department.
And you, you guys know it really well, so you, you know, maybe you're.
Let me tell you, it's a very difficult.
Ask your questions, but.
It's hard to explain.
Very difficult area to manage, I, I frankly resent having two dispatchers, I do. Because I can't tell you how many times the air is quiet.
But you never know. You never know.
We do know, we do know that every, that it's not gonna stay that way. When it gets busy, there's no way one can handle it by themselves.
And I don't think anybody would want that personal responsibility, I don't think that's fair to anybody.
Any questions? Because I'd like to go back to the two officers. This too, Steve. I'm asking for two police officers, I have some data here, I put it together because it was made very clear to me that I better justify it. That I was in for a bad time.
I've heard you're in.
Oh, I know, but I, I saw that already with the questioning of the few people that came before me. Understandable, asking for new people and manpower is always a big issue. Because it's not just a salary, it's a benefit package and it's a long-term employment. So I felt the first thing I needed to demonstrate to you or talk to you about was our workload and what we do and why we need more manpower. This first sheet you have here, this colored graph in front of you, the first one on top talks about total crime. This is two thousand and sixteen, year two thousand and sixteen, data from the state of Connecticut Uniform Crime Website. In the list here, you'll see Weston, Ridgefield, et cetera, you'll see next to it, you'll see next to Weston fifteen, that's the count of criminal incidences they had in that town. Then you see the population to the right. Now, as you look down this list and you correlate it with the graph, you will see all the way over to the right, Bethel's workload. We are carrying a lot more workload than these other towns that have the same population as us or more. We're a busy town. You will see down here at the bottom underneath it, where it says number of officers, those are the sworn police officers that those towns have. So even though we're doing considerably more work than Ridgefield, we have thirty-seven officers, Ridgefield has forty-four. Monroe has forty-three, we have thirty-seven. Wilton has forty-five, we have thirty-seven. Newtown has forty-five, we have thirty-seven. New Canaan has forty-five, we have thirty-seven. The second graph goes on to talk about arrests. These are arrests that these towns make over the year of two thousand and sixteen. You will see the same thing there. Those crimes that we have to investigate, that we have to go out on calls, investigate, do reports, and the arrests we make as a byproduct of them and other things is relative to our workload. After reviewing this, as well as some additional data I want to talk about, I, I should be asking for more than two. The next page, you see this chart. The blue line represents the officer staffing right now. We're at thirty-seven, counting me and the captain. The red line shows the staffing not counting the two SROs. So for instance, I would like to point out to you, you gave us a second officer in two thousand and twelve after Sandy Hook, but oh no, you didn't really give it to the police department, you gave it to the school in the form of a school resource officer. So we didn't get any improvement. It doesn't do anything to help us answer calls, do reports, patrol, fight crime. And why are these things important? Because when, we're mandated by Lord of Doomer, we don't do them right, we get taken to task not only by the public, but by the courts, by the lawyers, by the civil process, we get taken to task over that all the time. Supreme Court has said it very many times, these were sorry police department that you're short, that doesn't change anything. There are requirements in the law that you must comply with. Fact that you were short that night or you had other things that you were, doesn't make any difference. We're responsible to tend to the legal matters of everything according to law. So that reflects again on what our staffing has been, we haven't had, we had one additional officer given to us in two thousand and two and one in two thousand and seven. The officer we got in two thousand and twelve, we didn't get that, the school got that. Go on to the next page where it says DB incident type. Some of those are in color, some may not be. These are the cases that Detective Bureau opens and handles and investigates. Just trying to give you some idea, you know, you hear that, nothing happens in Bethel, what happens in Bethel? You hear that all the time. No, we're, we're fairly safe town, we don't have a lot of violent crime, but we do have crime that we are legally required to deal with. This is what the Detective Bureau opens and works on.
So, um, forgive me, I'm understanding. So a hundred and fifty-eight occasions there was a police officer, that's it?
No, 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 let me, let me back up, Detective Bureau doesn't work on everything. Detective Bureau doesn't work on everything. If you want to talk about calls we went on, go to the very last page and you'll see this. These are the calls that come into communications that we sent officers out to.
Okay, that makes a little bit more sense, because I'm looking at one fifty-eight and I said.
The serious crimes that need more follow-up. The serious crimes that need more follow-up work and investigation, go to the Detective Bureau. That's what that list is, but there's two lists for Detective Bureau. No, I shouldn't say that. The next one is UCR. This is the Uniform Crime Report that you hear advertised about all the time, the crime level in a certain town. Crime is down, when they hear crime is down, they're talking about UCR, Major Crime Report. This is the UCR Crime Report for the town of Bethel for two thousand and seventeen. These are the major crimes, all these went to the Bureau, along with other stuff that went to the Bureau. This is only major crime, this doesn't account for minor crime. That second handout you have talks about part one and part two. Part one is major crime, which one might say is fifty percent of our criminal work. Part two is minor crime, which is minor assaults, minor disturbances that may account for forty or fifty percent of the remainder of the work. I'm only trying to demonstrate the workload that we have here. That there's more to it than what meets the eye. There's one on Bethel Police Department on accidents. And when we talk about workload, the state of Connecticut is not shy about complicating it. There were so, there wasn't, five years ago, when we had an accident, there was a one-page report, you could handwrite it in the police car, front and back. Now, it's five or six pages, they decided they wanted more information. So now we have to come in and sit down at a computer, bring up a program and do a five or six-page report that used to be one-page, front and back. Officer could do that in the car in ten minutes, now it takes an hour, hour and a half to come in the headquarters, sit down at a computer and do that report. When we stopped the car to maybe issue a ticket for speeding or a red light, it was a five-to-ten-minute affair. Now, because of racial data that they want, they don't want us to be racial, but yet they put out a form that asks for racial data. Now the officer, every time he stops a car, every time he stops a car, whether he gives a ticket or not, has to fill out this form. Copy this form. This isn't new, this has been going out for ten years. They collect all this data, they're paying people millions of dollars to correlate it, and it's going nowheres. But yet, that's the law. We don't make up the law, we're required to obey the law and follow the law and do what we're told.
Chief, I just want to ask, this is being nosy. Under the larceny, all these ID thefts, are, are those like?
Yes.
The stuff from the computer or are these?
A little bit of everything.
Really?
Yeah. ID theft, it's a big one now.
Wow, it is big.
Another example of time, you know, labor-intensive work. Taking a simple larceny complaint, even up at Target isn't simple anymore, they got all these photos and all these discs and they have people that come in and they sit down there and they look at their computers and they say, oh, last week this guy stole something. Call the police department. And we go up there and some of them are investigatable and we catch people, some of them aren't.
Due respect, I think that we all know that how technology has changed and that you can fill it out in the car. I think we get that. And we can, oh no, I understand that and it's statutory obligations that just keep increasing. Totally get it.
There's a lot of people that don't realize the length, the amount of time and, and investment we have to make in doing our job. It is not, it's becoming very labor-intensive, very, compared to what it was ten years ago, fifteen years ago.
Sure, no doubt.
So that, so that's your. That is why we are asking for more manpower. What will we do with that manpower? It will make us more efficient, we'll be able to answer calls on time. Maybe we could do a couple other things that we'd like to do that we don't have the manpower for. Keeping in mind that even though I might have thirty-five employees, I don't have thirty-five employees, one's out sick, one's on an injury. It's constant, it's constant. We have minimum manpower is required by contract.
This is, I've got just a nit question, but it's because I'm just interested in it all. On the by-shift chart, zero, zero to zero eight, is that midnight, eight AM?
Midnight shift, yeah.
Military time.
Military time.
Well, I always thought that was when most trouble, I was just a little bit.
Nope. Secretary.
Really? Yeah, that's why.
Even the criminals sleep at night.
It's contractual.
Hey, in the interest of time, because we still have one more long thing, I just want to, I don't want to cut you guys off, but I just want to like get to the question so we can give Patrick a chance to get up here before everybody.
We also had, we'd like to do more drug work out there. I've had officers undercover doing drug work, it's very time-intensive, difficult. We did make a couple of good arrests last year, which I don't think any of you have heard about because the case has moved on to the DEA and they've taken it over. But there's plentiful drugs that are coming and going in this town all the time. But there's plentiful drugs that are coming and going in this town all the time, very hard to catch these people. Very hard to catch these people. So the manpower would help us do things like that. Right now, the DEA is asking us to assign someone to them part-time in continuation of the case we're working now. We don't have the manpower to do that. Opiate Task Force, Opiate Task Force.
So Chief, I just have one, hopefully your question, if you were to get two additional regular full-time police officers, does that decrease the overtime needs requirement?
It would slightly, yes. It's surely not going to wipe it out, but it would decrease, it would decrease it, yes.
Is there any way you can project what that saves might be?
No. I mean, I could guess.
Yeah.
Fifteen, twenty thousand maybe.
Your guess is better than mine.
Fifteen, twenty thousand dollars it might save, I don't know, I don't know. We're required to have minimum manpower as well, so you know, when we, I might have five on a shift, one takes vacation, one had a death in the family, now I've got three on calls and sick. I spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year just trying to cover sick time.
It's an important number, because it makes the add down to one oh five.
Let me ask you this question, if the state gave you guys more money for traffic violations, and are they reimbursing you more now that the state are asking for you to do more, like these forms?
I don't think they're giving us any more than...
It's probably the same, you know, you get the grants for five, seven thousand, eight thousand dollars.
We get some grants, but we don't, we don't make a lot of money. We don't make any money. There's some reimbursement, I think, for, well, you would know, Bob, what we get back from the state for summonses?
On those grants, on the grants...
No, 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 the summonses, they were, they were sending some money back on certain violations. Do you, are you aware of any of that?
I'm looking at it.
He's looking it up. But for the most part, we don't get anything back from tickets that you...
I understand that, you know, if, if, if your department and all other departments been demanded more by the state, then therefore the reimbursement for this, if there's a percentage, it should be increased because of more demand time. Now, you know, the three of us here, we know all of our legislators.
Well, that's where we'd have to go.
Yeah, yeah, and this is the reason why I'm asking, we can always turn the screws up a little bit.
Yeah, well, you know the status of the state, I doubt that's going to go anywhere.
The question comes down to, what do they want to do?
Yeah, yeah.
We budget every year for what is category called receipts receipts, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Seven months out of the year, so far we've gotten nineteen hundred. But I think what was Bob alluding to, some of the money that we get back from the state is grants, but it's...
To cover salaries, yeah. That I understand, but I was really ten percent, Mrs. Mitchell.
Okay, it's only for certain, it's only for certain violations.
I can speed your attention?
I wish we had those numbers, I wish we had those crime numbers at that first referendum.
Not going to the state, not going to us.
Oh, yeah.
Different licenses that she sells, the state gets...
So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I want to thank the Park and Recreation Department for capital donations, capital statements.
If anybody ever has any questions, feel free to reach out and ask us, cause we're just calling.
If anybody ever has any questions, feel free to reach out and ask us, cause we're just calling. I think we will, all right.
Steve, tell them they're through, speeding home.
Yeah.
Okay, while they're getting ready, I want to show you something.
If anybody ever has any questions, feel free to reach out and ask us, cause we're just calling. I think we will, all right.
Steve, tell them they're through, speeding home.
Yeah.
I have to plug the numbers in the seat.
I'd put it back, I'd say, which one do you...
I'm gonna do the budget first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked it in there. I know, I'm...
Rachel, do you want to...
Are we ready?
We are, yes. What is the presentation?
I'm Pat Morton, I'm chairman of Park and Recreation Commission, Eileen Earl is the director, and we got a little powerpoint, it goes about an hour and twenty minutes. We're gonna start with that.
And I didn't make you copies, I didn't make you copies of it, but I could email it to you if you want to see it in details, I decided to save the environment. So, so this first picture is Camperdy at one of, in our, at our day camp, this is our senior camp. And the next slide, I'm just going to give you a few, like, highlights of what we do. This is our preschool graduation, which happens in the municipal center gym in June. This is our day that we worked with the high school, it's called the Volunteer Day, and the high school freshmen volunteered, and they did several projects for us, this is at McCowr, they spread, they, these individuals spread wood chips that my guys would have taken two days to do at this park, at Bennett and at Parloa, which was a big help, so. This is our annual road race that we do every year. So we're just gonna go, kind of, I'll give you a quick overview of what we do. We do preschool programs, Mondays through Fridays, for ages eighteen months to kindergarten. We do before and after care now for the schools K to third grade. We have over two hundred students registered for those programs.
Do you do it in the schools?
We do three, three to schools, and before care is here at this building. Before care has, is about forty kids in it. We do a summer camp program for preschool, the ninth grade, which involves indoor/outdoor activities, which is very valuable for parents, it's nine to three, with a morning care from eight to nine. This year, with our new program, we did a theater program for children and the community. It's, it's a play that the kids put together, but the community can go to and watch it. We've done Hairspray, Rocky Horror Picture Show, and Peter Pan.
Little Shop of Horrors.
Little Shop of Horrors was the last one.
And then, and the next one is Shrek.
Didn't you guys see any of these plays?
So am all.
Yeah, they're very good.
I went, I'm thinking this is gonna be pretty good, it was, I couldn't imagine how good these kids are, it's just absolutely amazing.
So, and then we have community events, our annual Easter Icon, our Fourth of July Race, we do two movie nights during the summer, we do a Halloween celebration with a magic show. We have the teen center for middle school and high school students. And then our other side of our, away from the fun part, is our maintenance department, which takes care of the fun things of cleaning restrooms in the complex in the parks, clean facilities, clean up after events. We also maintain all the town greens and all the, the school property, and then we also maintain the sidewalks for the snow removal. So that's kind of like major highlights of what we do. So I'll go account by account pretty quickly, so we're not... The director, assistant director, and secretary, that's the three full-time people that are, we are in this building and office. We supervise all our full-time and part-time staff, and our part-time staff can go up to almost forty-five people at any given time, between instructors and camps and programs. We do all the registration, we do a computer system registration, which Rachel sets up for all, every season. We do facility rentals, we've taken over Bennett Rentals, which is a very busy time from March fifteenth to the end of October. Thanks Wendy. And we have other parks and fields in the municipal center that we reserve and rent out. We do our accounts, we are customer service, and we also do supplies for all our programs and maintenance. So our part-time staff, these are some camp pictures, consist of a camp director, assistant directors, and counselors, they supervise the children and do special events, like the one, that's a special trip that we've gone to...
Club Getaway.
Club Getaway, and that's a senior trip that we've had. So, we have our teen center, which we have a director and then a part-time person that helps her for major events. They're pretty much open on Wednesday and Thursday afternoon, supervising the teens, Friday evenings, trying to do special events. She's into community service events, they go to bend spells like on Wednesdays, they do Relay for Life, and she does her membership for, for that. The next one is before care and after care, this is our gym at seven o'clock on Monday through Friday. This is a picture of our before care, we have about thirty-five kids that are there between seven and eight-thirty every day. So we, and they do indoor and outdoor games when they're after school. Our park maintainers, we have the four full-time park maintainers, which is very helpful, they do the daily mowing and trimming of fields and town properties, daily cleanup of the fields and the properties. Every morning, my staff has to go and clean bathrooms, and clean, and pick up garbage, empty the downtown garbages on a daily basis. Field prep, we line and prep all the school fields for all the high school games and for all the youth events. Snow removal for all the town buildings, train station, and then, I've already mentioned the complex. This picture is of our football field this past fall. And then we have overtime, which is, we do it mainly, overtime, a lot of it is for mowing around the schools, because we can't mow when school's in session. We can't do it at eight, at nine o'clock in the morning when someone's trying to teach math. So we have to do it at, earlier in the morning or in the afternoons, and we even find it hard in the afternoons because we have after care, and then the sports teams are practicing, so trying to do a mower around the schools, so sometimes it's done on a Saturday morning. And so that's a lot of it. Field prep for the fields and the tournaments, a lot of the youth leagues play on Saturdays and Sundays, so during the spring, we sand pro and line the baseball fields, and we have tournaments pretty much every other weekend come after, come in June, so it's, it's overtime, we do get reimbursed for some of it, so.
Eileen, is that a new line item?
Yes.
Okay.
We added it because, I've added it mainly because we were finding that if we don't sand pro, like the softball fields on a Saturday morning, they will attempt to do it themselves, and then we have to spend more time on Monday fixing what they try to do on Saturday. So it's easier to pay for our staff to come and do it, it looks nicer, it's ready for an out-of-town team to come, and then we don't have to fix and have a bigger maintenance problem later on in the year, so. And then, of course, we have to clean bathrooms and, and check parks on Saturdays and Sundays. Longevity is our contract, it's a contract, but we have five full-time employees, two of us have been there for over thirty years, and the other three have been over thirteen, which is quite a bit, so. Office expenses, we've kind of kept it the same. We do background checks for all volunteer coaches, we require that, for anyone that coaches in our youth leagues to have background checks, as well as our part-time staff that's over eighteen, we do background checks for. Our maintenance and supplies is basically anything we need to do to repair. The big items in this is our fertilization program for the athletic fields, which we have to do organic. It's up this year because we've added the Berry School area to that program, which is the two softball fields and the football practice field, because we, we, we really are trying to keep it organic, and we can't spread any, like, we can't do any pre-emergent type of things, we have to do a lot of other organic fertilizing and overseeding to get, to kill out the crabgrass that has been there for years. But we have irrigation now, so that will help with that, so that's why that's up. The other two big items are the porta-potties we have in, throughout the complex and the parks, and the dumpsters that we have at the facilities. So that's maintenance supplies. Dues in education, we belong to the National and State Recreation and Parks Association, and Rachel and I, I'm a certified professional, which I go to the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association State Conference, I have to keep my certification and get CEUs, and Rachel goes to the Campground Association Annual Conference, because it's geared towards programs and camps, and she gets some great ideas for that. And then we provide CPR training for all staff for, that work at our camps. Clothing allowances by union contract for clothing and safety shoes for our maintenance staff. Contracted service is up because, the first one is up because of the truck lease that I have, I have a new vehicle that we are leasing. And the other one is a new lawnmower, which is also in the capital plan, so it's kind of what you guys decide to do if you want to lease it for five years, which we've done for several mowers, or you buy out, buy it outright in the capital plan. Just to let you know, the, the one mower that is the lease, this, this budget that you're working on now will be the last year of the lease. So there'll be one year of overlap, and then if you lease the, the four fifty, the bigger one I want, you, you only have one year of overlap, and then they'll be only having one lease. When I get to the capital, you'll understand that a little bit more. Park, field and park renovation, these are a few of the men's field, and in the capital item, our plan, we have irrigation for the men's field, we would really like to get new irrigation there so we can get grass to grow, because come July, anything that grew in the summer dies, because it's like a sandy base, it's hot, the sun's beating down back there, it's really hard to keep it, it becomes a safety issue, I'm sure Bob and Brad know that, as they play on it, and as come July, it's really dusty, and, and then the other one is to purchase and get some fitness equipment around the trail at McCowr Park.
What does that look like, really, what kind of fitness on?
It could be like, like bench presses, or, or anything like that, there's a...
At McCowr?
At McCowr, like, it could be like two, two pieces of equipment on one open area, the trail, and you would run to the next spot, and then there would be two other ones. They have leg presses, they have push-up bars, you know, different things that you can put two at a time, or you can do one, I found one big unit that's kind of like a, like the ninja things, like a lot of the climbing, and, and a lot of the adults don't have like hand-over-hand bars, there's nothing for them to do that type of training at, so.
That would just be for the summertime, I would do that.
Well, it would be, it would be permanent.
Oh, it would be permanent.
It would be permanent, it would be there year-round, we just don't have the trail open during the wintertime.
I was down in Florida this past week, and I, actually I went and I took some pictures, I haven't shown you yet, that, like, every fifty yards or so, there's, there's a piece of equipment, it's outdoor, and, you know, and it's, you know, it's all metal and plastic, and you know, you, basically you're using your own weight, you're working against yourself, but it's really nice.
This is like the one big component unit that we, I was looking at, so, and it would have everything all together.
Adult jungle gym.
Yeah, and more doing, adults are doing the CrossFit type of things, or the, so you wanted to pass that around. And you can buy some of that in different individual ones, too.
And Eileen, I'm sorry, within the three fifteen account, which item is that? Is that park improvements?
Yes. Okay, so programs, this is our biggest, my biggest part of my budget, it's, it's the money that we spend out for all our programs, basketball, our new program, Little Ballers, that's what this picture of, it's kindergarten and first graders playing basketball, so it's really kind of cute, we had thirty kids in it this year, so. We do gymnastics, there's tennis programs, there's sports camps, there's flag football. Our biggest one is our preschool program that utilizes the municipal center, this gym here on a daily basis, we have over six hundred kids in this program, variety of programs, so. And then this is our movie night, we have theater, Little Shop of Horrors, and our staff supervises the municipal center. In this account, we have staff that supervises the municipal center when there's activities out front, like the Earth Day event, or there's the carnival, if there's anything, when there's meetings, ninety percent of the time, we have programs going on, but there's that ten to twenty-five percent that it's only meetings, and our staff still has to be in the building. So, I know I ran through that pretty fast.
So I understand that these program costs, those are other steps. So I understand that these program costs, those are other staff or facility rentals or what?
Our programs are staff that we hire, that are our staff and they run it right, right.
So that's already?
You know, a certain person might do a dance class or, you know, fitness class, like, and that's what they do.
So what is, what are the, what do these program costs represent?
That's the expenditure for like supplies and the instructor. And then we have an income, like, an income that offsets that, basically, that expense, like.
So this is the net?
That's the, no.
No, this is just the cost.
This is just the cost.
It's the cost.
And what's the income?
What is your income?
My income for this coming year is five seventy-five, six forty. I don't think Bob included it in your, in there.
Think it was the revenue side?
It's, our revenue is anticipated is five seventy-five, six forty.
Eileen, what's that compared to last year?
We were at five sixty-three, five six-three.
Five six-three, five six-three?
Mm-hmm. That's what it said.
We actually went up a lot when we started the before-school and after-school program.
Yeah, and I didn't.
Very popular.
Yeah, and I didn't increase that this year in income or expenses because I haven't finished out a full year yet, so I wanted to kind of see where we were.
That shows people are really utilizing their programs.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, and occasionally, not too often, but occasionally, it just, it won't be that popular and, and just like, like the, you know, the Friday night ski trips, you know. If it is a little time we can tell about it, I'm not thinking about it now.
Pat, Eileen, my favorite question, revenue and fees. Have you increased them this year?
We've increased a few of them, but we've, we've gotten to the point where we feel if we increase too much, we will lose. Lose, so we add it, we try to add programs like Little Ballers to try to add facilities. We've done the food truck to the park to try to generate some revenue that way. Tournament fees if we decide to charge it a fee.
That was my next question, because tournaments, like you said, you have to put your people out there.
Right, and most of the time, the leagues will cover for that staff, that, like, if someone's there on a Saturday all day, they'll cover that person's, that salary, like, that person to be there. That's the agreement for having the tournament. I don't do the tournament if they're not gonna, they have to cover the staff for Saturday, Sunday. But they don't cover the staff prepping for the tournament on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, so, so should we charge a fee of three hundred dollars? They pay for the extra cleanings of the porta-potties. Yeah, only the extra cleanings, they don't clean, pay for the monthly fee. But like, if they want it cleaned three times, like, they want it cleaned Friday night before the Saturday tournament, Sunday morning, they pay for that, those cleanings.
And then the, the summer programs, we restructured the fees to make it more flexible for the, you know, if you're gonna be, so you weren't tidying, you couldn't go these two weeks, so if you're gonna be on vacation one week, you can move things around.
Right, like, and we might, we are in the process of working on that camp fee, so it maybe go up five dollars and.
And what about Bennett and McCowr, the rentals?
Bennett, we went up last year.
I know.
So this year, we did not go up.
Okay.
So we kept it the same fee.
But Bennett is pretty much rented out, isn't it?
Yes.
Every week?
Yes.
Your preschool programs, too, are you competitive with the, like, the YMCA or something like that on an hourly basis?
No, we're cheaper at an hourly basis for like before and after care. Yeah.
Well, it's something to consider as the program goes forward.
Right, but there's also a point that you have to realize that there's, some of it is a service. We are, we are to provide some sort of service to the people that pay.
That's the very same principle as when I approached the Board of Education with their, with their little friends. Four years, they were so cheap, but now they're getting up there, you know.
Right, right. And, and I feel like our programs that we do with preschool on a daily basis are comparable to someone going to preschool at, Little Friends or something like that.
If there's such a demand for it, it may warrant maybe a slight increase as you go along.
Right, and we do charge an extra fee for an out-of-towner. If they take our programs and we do get some of those people from out of town to come to take some of our programs, then there's an extra fee there as well.
And you have fees for late pickups, too?
Yes. Yep, yes, yeah. Someone gets charged five dollars for ten minutes or, so.
I have a question. Can you just, what's the difference between one oh five and three sixteen? Do you just have some examples of?
Okay, one oh five is our, our, our day camp and before care. And three sixteen is all our, what we used to have as like contracted programs, like, we hired, like, the tennis camp is outside, or a person comes in and runs the tennis camp and we get a percentage of it and they run it for us. The one oh five is just all our playground day camps that are the six weeks and for, and before and after care and the teen center director. So those are like teen center directors, like a year-round, part-time person, and the other ones are strictly like part-time. And then the program one is strictly line item by program itself, whether it's tennis, basketball, gymnastics.
Curling.
Yeah, or pickleball, or starting pickleball.
Pickleball is huge.
We're starting pickleball.
Yeah, that's getting huge.
So if you look at your cost for those two things, for one oh five and for three sixteen, you're around seven hundred thousand dollars, but you're also generating almost six hundred thousand from those programs, from.
From those, right. So if you take my bottom line of twelve, one point two million is my budget and you take the five hundred, it's seven hundred thousand for what we do. And, and the big thing is that, I would say, out of that seven hundred, how much is that, is maintenance? And that's a service. That, people expect their athletic fields to be kept nice, their athletic fields to be ready for games, their bathrooms at McCowr Park cleaned, their ba, the park picked up.
They come down, they hit the garbage cans on, you know, downtown, so.
Eileen, the capital plan, would you be able to maybe email that to Bob, the operator, and he could email it?
I can email it to, I can email both of them to you, yep. So I'll just touch upon the, my, or do you want to not do the capital? Okay.
It's a capital?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the capital plan, I, I did several slides of this year's and then I just, I just mentioned the other ones, which you know, for two or three years or four years out. A needs assessment in the master plan is, is something that Matt and I have been talking about. And, and I've been asked about it for like several years ago and then it kind of got in the back burner. It's an offshoot of what, like, the plan of development does, that planning and zoning. But it would give our department an assessment of our facilities and sometimes our programs, what the community needs and wants. And then it gives you recommendations of what you should try to plan for.
Yeah, you know, Laura was saying, all the, all this building that's going on, you know, we're looking at, you know, do we have the right facilities for what's coming down the road? And this would be the, you know, with the, the whole assessment.
Right, do we have enough parks? Do we have enough open space? Do we have enough trails? Do we have enough, whatever it is? And then we would have, as a parking rec department and a commission, a plan for five, ten years down the road of saying that we should, we should try to do a water park or whatever. And, and then what we could do to improve. It also can help you improve your maintenance, evaluate your maintenance schedule and what your maintenance department does. So that would come out of a needs assessment and I have in sixty thousand dollars for that. The locker rooms, and this is, is like been talked about for years. I look back when I first started, the locker rooms have been in the capital plan since two thousand and five. Have been moved around, shifted around, moved up and down and left out since then. But the locker rooms were built in nineteen fifty-nine. This building was renovated in nineteen ninety-six and we moved in March of nineteen ninety-six. That area, the locker rooms and in front of the GP room were not touched, except for the floor and the hallways. It's the only new thing that was done, and maybe painted the hallways. The only thing that was done. The programs that would benefit if we renovated these locker rooms were, of course, be my preschool program, before care, basketball, adult volleyball, our exercise program, our summer camp program. This building has been used for shelter for three of the major storms that happened. And just recently, this past fall, was opened for showers as well. And the showers are, you'll see pictures. Also, with the front hallway part of the project, the plan that I've been working with, Public Building Insight, we've been working on together, is to renovate the front of the general purpose room and have two restrooms, men's and women's restrooms, right there. So when there's events out front, we would be able to close off that part and there would be a men's and ladies restroom right there. People would walk, be able to walk in and walk out. Right now, if you wanted to use the ladies room, except for the one old one that's right there in front of the GP room, you have to walk all the way down past parking rec to buy planning and zoning for the next women's restroom without going into Veterans Hall down here. So it would help that. So this pic, these pictures are, the one on the top left is the way the hallway is right now. And this would be the way the front entryway by the GP room would look if we did the renovations, which opens up the ceiling, it just makes it much more pleasurable to the, you know. And then the two bathrooms would be on the right side there.
Where the closets are now?
Where the closets are, yep. There's two bathrooms right there and we would just expand them to be. This is the boys' locker room. And then, of course, this would be the, what it would renovate and be to the boys' restroom. Right now, in the boys' locker room, there is, the bathroom is one toilet and one urinal and one sink.
I mean, hasn't, hasn't this been?
We're at Public Building Insight, so we're like at the point where we're trying to get an RFP and then it's up to you guys to decide if it will move forward.
So the money never got appropriated?
No. Seven thousand for the plans, so we've been working on the plans and everything.
Not the actual renovation?
Not the actual renovation, yeah.
By the way, didn't Public Site go and come up with a figure that was a little bit less than a million on this?
Well, it was, but it didn't have prevailing wages in it, so we have to go out to bit, we out to bit. So we have to, it has, it's gonna be over a million. We figured at one point three, so that's why we left one point four in there. This is the girls' locker room showers right now. Those are the ones that we presently have people try to use.
That's if you lose power in your house, you want to come down and use a shower.
See, and done it.
It's really hot water.
It's true.
And then this would, what it would look like if it got renovated, so. So basically, those two items are kind of like what our commission and department call as our priority for our capital plan. We feel that it, the locker rooms and, of course, the plan for our department would benefit us and benefit the community in the long run. So these are my equipment ones and the lawnmower, it's the Groundmaster lawnmower, which is, the present one we have is a two thousand and seven. And it mows all the athletic fields, but it has over three thousand hours of operation and they say the life of these is about four thousand. But it's also, but it's ten years old, it's eleven years old.
Is that the same one that's in the lease?
Yes, so it's up to them to decide, like, we, I didn't want to not put it in my operating budget because if you decided not to fund it, then at least I could get it because we could lease it over five years.
Right.
At fourteen, or we pay out sixty-two thousand dollars now for it. But it, it gives the fields an efficient cut and it gives a quality cut. That football field, that look that it has, that's what this mower does. But it, it mows the field. And then the next part mower is the smaller mower that does all like the town greens. We have one that kind of died, it had engine problems and we're not able to repair it, so we're down one.
Does those things go on forever from what I understand?
Yeah, I'm not, I have to check because we've had, we have one that's a fourteen and then we had one that's like a ten, so.
Would you put like just a new motor on it?
No, it was like not fixable.
They, they took it down to.
Bethel Power and they said it wasn't fixable.
They said it wasn't worth it.
So. And then the other items in my part, in my capital plan for this year were paving the parking lots in, at McCowr, Bennett and at Roar, so. It's where my maintenance building is.
Next to the police station.
Yeah, so those are, you know, and there's been talk about trying to include them when, if they are doing a road that's in those areas, to maybe include them in, in a, in the road account at some point, but. Yeah, but this would be the front part of that parking lot and around my maintenance building, which supposedly we, we need to, we should pave around my maintenance building. It's not, no.
It's up by the building.
Up by the building. The wells are back by the softball field. And then these are the other items that are in, you have on your list for capital items for the future, which are to replace playgrounds at Parloa and at McCowr, to fix outdoor bathrooms at Bennett, a turf field and track resurfacing, the water park. We did the tennis courts about five years ago. This would be just like, just like recovering them and repainting them, not doing what we did five years ago.
The track, that's a specialized surface, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
That's a what of like a, it goes like eight, ten years?
When I remember we put it in, I thought it had about ten years, like.
We're at about ten years.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Ten years?
Yeah, that's why when, if we do a turf field, you would do the track resurfacing right after you would put a turf field in.
Yeah, I think it's eight years, so you're planning this in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty five period.
That's the way we looked at it.
And then Kowalski property or six mysterious acres that we have by Mitchell Park that, again, it keeps getting moved around and it's.
Someday, I mean.
Someday will be, it will be something out there, but.
What would you put there? Like, what's the biggest need right now? Or would you wait for the study?
I think I would wait for the study, but there's also, there's needs for a larger baseball field and you would have that up by Mitchell Park. You could utilize it, I mean, you could put bathrooms out in that part of it because there's a septic that you, you know what I mean? There's area to do that, you could bathrooms for Mitchell Park and the BMX track, so.
Town pool.
Town pool. A community center. We, we, we want to get the horse thing right by the, the property that next, the four H property that connects it.
How about a nine-hole golf course?
That would be a little tight there. We could do that.
Is that it?
Yeah. The water park, we are thinking at McCowr.
Any questions from the board of management on the capital? When you put in the new bathrooms in the building, is there any special requirements because they're needed for that emergency?
They would just have to be handicapped accessible.
They have to work.
Yeah, right, right, and they would have.
No other design required?
No, and they, there's plenty of, in the design, there's plenty of them to meet the need if there was a large group of people here, like, so. And it opens it all up. It, it takes like the locker room and almost splits it in half and makes a hallway so you can walk from that hallway to the back door in one hallway and then go into the locker rooms from there. And it organizes our closet space, so.
Eileen, who's doing the study for you on the needs assessment for the community?
I haven't.
Well, I have one question.
Who's doing the needs assessment study for the community?
I haven't, I've gotten a few people to give me information. There's McBroom and.
Mylona McBroom.
are doing the plan of development one. So it would be good to like have them, because a lot of that information that they're doing for the plan of development would be same, like, they would have a lot of the information already done, so.
That's something that would go out to a formal bid.
Go out to bid anyways, too.
But she's talked to a couple of companies and Mylona McBroom is, is a very well-known and well-respected consultant and they're already doing the plan of conservation of development. So we got some of the numbers from them. But this is something, we tried to put this in the plan last year and it, and it got bumped out, pushed back due to some other more pressing needs. But if you, if you look at our park system and, and listen to the residents, they're, they're, you know, we, we've grown and people are expecting more. It's becoming more difficult for them to schedule time on fields. I used to, I haven't had any calls in a while, I used to get calls from some of the religious leaders saying, you know, why are so many games or practices scheduled on Sunday mornings? It's because the, it's the only, everything is so overscheduled, it's the only thing to do, so.
You get the feel when you get it.
So what we, what we envision is doing a process similar to what the Bethel Forward was, you know. Listen to what, have some focus groups, listen to what people want and then look at the inventory of land that we have, whether it's developed or undeveloped, and say, you know, over a long period of time, what can we do? Let's, what, let's put together a long-term plan so that year after year, we can take little bits of it and try to develop it. So I, I think it's becoming more important because of. So, I, I think it's becoming more important because the expectations are rising. It's basically what it is.
Isn't that true, though?
Well, the one thing, I have a, just quickly, just to, I have a report from the National Recreation and Parks Association and it says there should be a park for every two thousand residents. And this one you guys will laugh at and I'm never gonna ask for this many staff, but it says seven point three staff members per ten, ten thousand residents.
We'll give and take. Remind me, I'll make that motion.
If you look at a lot of this new building... If you look at a lot of the new building, they don't have yards.
They don't have yards, they're gonna look for places to play.
That's true.
And one of the things that planning and zoning has to deal with is that they really haven't, they probably should in the future, put more requirements for recreational space as part of development plan, as one of the requirements. Because, because you're right, you look, there's high-density housing and there's...
Well, just look at Bethel crossings, their yards are not very big.
No.
Nothing.
And so, they're gonna be wanting to go somewhere to play.
They put in a pool.
The pool is about this. And it's a public pool, and it's a public pool.
We have crowed field right across the street from them, you know, we, you know, we know if we could do something part of that property.
Yeah, well, that's too much because...
Right, because the waters are there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
You gotta be careful there.
Need a bigger baseball field there.
Yeah.
Did you have a comment there?
Yeah, if I may make a comment. Couple months back, I sat with the Parks and Recreation Commission, made a proposal that I think would be a great idea, I don't know how the town looks at it, but we need park space in this town, we could use some park space. We do have some space right under our hives. I don't know what we plan on doing with the police station and the property of the police station, but I think that would be an excellent park for that area, service that area, especially with all the new housing that's going up there. And as Kevin's mentioned, you don't have yard space like you did twenty years ago. You don't have two acre, three acre zoning anymore. A lot of these houses come equipped with very small parcels of property. Where are the kids gonna play? Where are they gonna go? And one of the ideas I came up with and I volunteered to run an ad hoc committee, whatever anybody wants to do in this town. But, I came up with the idea of utilizing that property, making it to a small park where people can go. You've got sidewalks on both sides of the streets now, so you have safe clearance where people can stroll their kids down in the carriages to the park, whatever. You could put some basketball courts down there, you could put a tennis court down there. And ideally, you've got the Parks and Rec garage right there, so they don't have far to go to maintain the property. So, that was one of the ideas that I came up with. And if there's any interest in it, I'd like to take it forward. I'd like to take it forward in this town and see if we can do something. And I think this was the appropriate time to bring that up.
Thank you. All right, will you do a adjournment?
Second, someone make the most of it. I said, did a non-existent motion.
Hey, the meeting is adjourned. It was well worth the wait.
I feel like I rushed.